Item number 149 North Wilton Road. Application to Ruchman, between Ruchi and Arisage. We have Pagan on our special permit for section 3316142. To allow an addition of a garage that results in space for more than five vehicles. Grade access to 1,000 square feet of soil and service period of 10,000 square feet. Feet in the Florida zone 49. All the fourth road.
This is I think between Ruchi. I'm here this evening representing John Vianney and Peggy Dunn with their application at 49 North Wilton Road. We also have here this evening with me is Steve Ross who is a son-in-law of Mr. Vianney. It's been very important. This application actually lives on this property as well. We also have for the engineering, we have a we have Angelo Devantio, who's I hopefully on Zoom. When we get to the site plan application, I'm going to turn it over to him. We have Chris Croco here, who is our architect and he will get up and present the architectural plans. So this has been sort of a long time coming for this 49 North Wilton Road. We wrote an application, actually, you remember that we ended up withdrawing? That particular application was for an accessory structure. And after really going through and looking at what we need to do and how we need to do it, we decided to attach the actual garage that we're looking at instead of having an accessory structure. So I sort of took away all the different special permits we may have needed for accessory structure. Build 1,000 square feet. So may have seen this application kind of then we withdrew. So in this particular case, what we're really requesting for is under 3.3 C1. And what that calls for is if you have, if your property can hold more than five vehicles in a garage or extensive garages, et cetera, you do apply to this commission for a special permit on that. We're also asking for some grading permits based on really the fact that the location of this particular piece of property is really in a spot, I don't know how many of you were able to get up and look at it, but at the edge of the driveway, the end of the driveway where you're going to be coming in, there's a huge fall off. It's like 10 to 15 feet drops. In order to put the location of the garage there, right beyond where the driveway is now, we're going to need to grade and present retaining walls on the property. So what we're looking for today is we're looking for approval. As I said, we're we've connected this building vis a vis a hallway to the residence itself. It's about 2,340 square feet of garage space and about 252 square feet of the enclosure. First picture they are looking at is an overview of where we are, 49 North Wilton Road. And you'll note that, you know, this neighborhood in Ucan is larger lots, all for the most part over six acres or so. And most of them have numbers of improvements on them, additional buildings, tennis courts, pools, et cetera. That's for this neighborhood. When Mr. Vianney has kind of bought this property, it has a pool on it. It also has a pool house. It is a single family, right? That's 600 feet or so driveway, a rear lot from Canadian Road. So if you'll lean for a second, yeah, thank you. So this is what I'm sort of talking about these particular buildings. Lot sizes are all in the neighborhood over six acres, except for really the lot right in front, which was that old Monroe House. And that house came out itself as own by Campbellstown. But that's a little bit less, although they probably have the most coverage based on the amount of acres that they have. But you'll see here that in this particular neighborhood, you're looking at large lot sizes, large living areas, multiple buildings vis a vis improvements, tennis courts, et cetera. Do you want to go to the next slide please? So here's a location survey on the property. This shows you where this building is going to end up going. You'll see that we have a long driveway up and then they're going to extend that driveway so that it comes to this particular building. Once I said it's a little, this slide is not a great slide either. But when we get to the site plan, I think it's going to be more important that we just pull up that site plan and you'll be able to see a little bit better detail. But you will note here that the building is 50 feet away from the side door setbacks. It's very far away from neighboring properties. If you can name go to slide five, please. And that's one more. So here are the neighboring properties in the area. You'll note that 39 North Wilton Road essentially 217 feet from the residence of this particular project, 650 Laurel, 400 square feet, 61 North Wilton, 410, 87 North Wilton, 440, 612, 525, 592, 590, and 9 North Wilton, 870. I just think it's important to note how far away these residences are in the zone based on the fact that we believe that this addition of this particular structure is going to have little or no effect on neighboring properties around it. This property, these properties also hopefully, those who were able to go out and visit it, there's lots of mature screening here, both along the driveways. There's close to two to three acres of woods in between 49 North Wilton Road and those properties on Laurel Road. And there's very mature screening that runs along the driveway of 39 and 61. Next slide, please. So this is just a smaller view of the distances between the properties. I will note that on 39, if you look sort of closely where that blueish in the property line is, you'll see that there's an accessory structure there that also actually provides more screening for any work that's being done on our particular piece of property. I could not tell where that building came from. It must be legally not conforming in one way, shape, or other because it's obviously right on the property line. It can't be more than five or 10 feet from our client's property. But the one thing that is good about it is it does provide some additional barrier, if even needed, between that and the residence on 39 North Wilton Road. Next slide, please. So this is just giving you sort of another idea of exactly in that from the from our client's property. You'll see that here are mature trees. We took all these pictures back in March, which is, I think, helpful to the commission in the sense that you'll note that these are deciduous trees, pine trees in here. We're not looking at things that are going to be leaking leaves. And then all of a sudden, we'll see that a structure vis a vis either our clients' or anyone else's. And you know that the roof line of the 39 North Wilton Road, that's the accessory structure I was just talking about. And that was not, that's not visible. The primary structure is not visible from where this particular proposal is going. Next slide, please. So here's the woods in the back. Once again, we've taken in March, so you can note that there are no trees on these. And there's a lot of, obviously, right now you can't see anything. And even in this picture, per 650 Laurel Road, you know, it's almost impossible to see the house from where it is. Next picture, please. 612 Laurel, 592, these are all looking from the back of the building down into Laurel Road. Once again, very difficult to see any additional houses here. The garage that we're adding is actually only about 26.8 feet high. They could go up to 40 feet or so, but they're not. They're keeping it sort of at a lower level. But anyway, once again, you can see here that both these other property owners are generally not visible. 612, you can see slightly from this particular picture. Next slide, please. So this is the sort of the finished look it's going to look like. This is what the pre-car garage looks like now. And then when they add in the additional four days, it's going to be essentially the same finish that the house today has. The next slide, please. Oh, there isn't? Yeah, that would be great. I'll just, I mean, I'll do a quick recap just to the special permit criteria. And then I can turn it over to Wayne as far as what he wants to talk about as far as the site plan. If there's any questions that you might have. But essentially with the site plan, I'm sorry, the special permit criteria we're looking at is what is suitable location for this use. Say that it is based on the fact that there's interest screen in between this building and anything else. We would also indicate that there's going to be no adverse effect on any neighboring properties. There was, one of the neighbors to 39 has written a letter of objection to this particular application. And I'm going to start to go through his proposal. I'm sorry, his objections and our responses to those objections. Some of them were questions, some were just objections. Nothing's going to change as far as traffic or anything of the like. I mean, right now, there's four drivers on this property and they're all these four drivers on this property, regardless of how many cars go in the garage or don't go in the garage. Right now, this applicant does have small car collection as well as four cars of their own or five cars of their own. So the rationale behind putting this garage up was to basically provide space for the cars that they actually have now. And then, yes, eventually in the future, if they do obtain more cars, they would use that space for them. It's also going to be used for things like outdoor furniture and storage and kids clothes and the like. So while the space may seem big, it is for a specific purpose. That's not changed though in any way, shape, or form, how the property is going to be used or whether or not there's going to be additional traffic per se on the property. Once again, if there's four people who have cars, those are the only four people who can be driving. Right now, the particular driveway itself, and you may be able to see in one of those Google Maps, they have to basically park all their cars outside based on the fact that they have a three-car garage now that they use for storage and for the, and for holding the three cars they have, that they have like six or seven trucks. So that was sort of the intent behind this particular new building. I think we'll go to the site. Do you have site plan up? Okay, I think we can just go to the site plan. And then I'll ask Wayne to talk about that site plan. And then I'll come back at the end and go through one of the neighbor objection letters. That's all right. After both, because some of the questions may actually be answered by Wayne and also by the architect. So Wayne, if I can ask you to unmute yourself and?
Yes, certainly. Wayne Devanzo, Fairfield County Engineering. As you can see from, from the site plan, we have, we are showing a retention system to meet storm water management requirements. This will fully mitigate a 25-year design storm. The driveway is routed to, to the retention. It's going to provide 1,300 square, I'm sorry, 1,300 cubic feet of storage, which is about 10,000 gallons. It will provide groundwater recharge, so it will, there, you can see, it's sort of those squares that are in the lower center of the plan. It will provide groundwater recharge and, you know, it will percolate back into the, into the ground and, and then flow along the natural contours of the property, which is to the east, to, you know, towards the wetlands, more or less. It is 21, at the closest point, it's 21 feet from the property line. And it is also to be installed actually lower than the adjacent property. The bottom of the retention is actually lower than the adjacent property, you know, to, to the south, if you were to, to look at the grades there. The wall along the driveway, the wall that's sort of is near the retention is 10 and a half feet from the property line. The other retaining walls that we needed to put around the garage addition are all four feet tall or less and spaced 10 feet apart and sort of, you know, terraced. The closest of those is 23.6 feet from the southerly property line and the other two are 26 and 28 feet. We also have had a B100 plan approved for the septic systems for both the main house and the pool house that are on the property. So, you know, we've shown that we can place a fully code-compliant septic system on the property if either the existing system should fail. And the, you know, the addition is not taking up too much space to prevent that from happening. That, that is, I think, about it. Happy to answer any questions?
Okay. Chris, you want to come up and go through the architecturals? If they move my point of the architecturals, that would be great.
Evening, Chris Croco, Joseph Crowe, Art X. Here. Basically, H5P is kind of what we're going for, as Mr. Ruchi said. And we're going to be matching garage doors, garage doors, deciding, existing shake siding and color the new building and the existing ceiling roof with the new building. As far as the trim package goes, the trim package will, the trim package will remain the same. The building is 64 by 62 with four garage doors. And between them, we've breezed way with a small radius on the rear, which we feel this radius matches the existing radius on the back of the property, at the back of the residence. And try to keep the building as low as possible and roof on top flattens out and flat roof on top. Questions?
Would it be a second floor? This is a brand, will it be a second floor?
No, those windows are strictly aesthetics.
So it's clear, clear right on inside?
They'll have that look of like a dormer look on the inside. We will look up just at the outline. Yeah.
It's Kent Turner. Do you have a floor plan?
Yes.
Here with us? So could you please tell us how this space is going to be conditioned?
Um, it's, at that point in time, we're not fully into any drawings. But the space will have some sort of inner heat, they say.
And where would that be located?
Yeah, Chris, I always see no phone, no drains.
Sir, I'll take you.
I think we're going to do stuff out there.
Hi, I'm Steve Ross. I'm a resident at 49 North Wilton. The garage will not have any floor drains, no water running to the garage. There'll be no AC. Just a random of my problems.
So, but you will have heating and cooling? Nope, nothing? Okay. And what about the lighting?
Lighting will basically just be standard LED strips that we use all the time. They're all worth the value of strips, so I don't have a lot of sequence of the building.
I would look into the building code as far as your air changes for a garage. Somebody's running the engine and everything's shut. It could be a very, you know, potentially dangerous situation.
We'll take that into account when we get to the building.
Other questions? Thank you.
Will the structure, the job, Commissioner Johnson, will these structures, I think, be proposed garage? The main house, will that be heated?
That area might have it's more of a breezeway than a habitable space, so no, there won't be any AC in that space.
So it's an unheated structure, a breezeway that's just enclosed yet. I want to say flying weather system. I'm not quite sure what term to use. The, the steps that are providing some support for the structure. If I look at the
It's foundation, your steps, your foundation?
I'm not quite sure what term to use, but in other words, there's various stone structures and a step-like function around the building.
Oh, those are retaining walls, the retaining walls. Those retaining walls is meant to manage.
Yeah, but anyway, I wasn't sure what term to use. But anyway, if I look at the top of the graphical map, this is a very steep property, falling off, not quite in a sheer manner, but pretty close to it. Very steep in fact, like that, I guess, courthouse broad. The name of the water course behind the property that is also a property, on the property. He's going to survey and provide it. And so just wondering about water filtration from the building into, I guess, into these structures and how that will put in work.
Mr. Chris, David Ruchi, I think we should have Wayne talk about that, the engineering, how it's going to work. You're absolutely right, though, there is drop-off sources back there. And these in the east retaining walls are put anyways exactly for that, exactly for that purpose in order to kind of fulfill enough, for lack of a better word, words. But I think Wayne can talk about how those will put in since he's one of the engineers on that. Hold up again.
When do I jump in?
Let me see what the height is here. Is he now?
Is he not here?
I'm sorry, I was muted. What was the exact question, please, again?
This, John, was one of the pressures. Yeah, these step-like structures that go down the, down the slope, in effect, seemingly provide structural support to the building. That's my interpretation. I'm wrong, please correct me, but?
Yeah, no, they don't really provide structural support so much for the building. It's just stability for the slope itself. And our, and their heights are limited really by regulation. That's why they're only four feet tall and in space the way they are. It's really providing stability for the, for the ground around the structure, not the structure itself.
All the crystal is supporting ground.
Well, you're supporting soil, you're supporting the foundation, supports the building, so that's what it cares.
Yeah, but if you see on our, our elevations, our foundation goes down fairly far almost.
Yeah.
Can I jump in on this? I'm the resident at 612 Laurel Road, Christine Marvin.
Excuse me, excuse me. We will open this hearing up to the public and due course, but I
Okay, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So rain's coming down its building. It rolls off and it would then hit gutters. And the gutters feed into these structures.
Though not. Now, can you pull up the site plan? This is also a question from Wayne.
Yeah, it, the, yes, it sheet flows away from the building and down. It does not tie into the retention. The retention is collecting runoff, is collecting runoff from, from the driveway.
And go into, there's a pipe or where do they go? Or one way or on the map?
The roof, are you talking about the roof or the?
Water hits the roof and where does it go?
Yeah, yes, yes, the downspouts would go, they would go to splash blocks on the, on the north side, for example, of the, of the building. And one in the, the, I guess, would be southeast corner of the building and, and would sheet flow away that way.
And they would then hit the splash blocks and then go to soil?
Correct, right.
And, okay. And the tops of these step structures around, two step structures, one to the it's north, south, and one to the, it's east. The tops of them are permeable, they're grass.
Yeah, yes, it'd be grass.
So if water falls directly on one of these step structures, it will be just goes into soil and then?
Yes, it would go into, it would go into, it would percolate into the soil. And there would of course be footing drains behind each, each of the walls. And it would get, eventually get into, into those footing drains and out, you know, out, out those, those drains.
How stable would these structures be in a significant rainstorm? I mean, I've had experience with here, but in California. And I used to call some of the houses sliders, you know, with this big rain, they're on a forty-foot, we slope and it would be tricky. And I just wondered about the stability of this and not, I mean, it's a big rainstorm.
Yeah, I ultimately, probably a geotechnical engineer would speak better to it. But, you know, if they're properly constructed, if they're, they're segmental block walls, if it's compacted between courses as it's supposed to, between the walls as it's supposed to, you know, they should be, they should be stable, they should, and of course, have the proper drainage behind them. That, that's, that's critical. They should, they should be fine. I mean, they're constructed, you know, on the slopes that are allowed. They also have a geo-grid reinforcement, all of them, that extend back into, into the soil every, typically every two courses. So there's quite a bit of reinforcement laterally, I guess, as they were behind each of the walls.
And some, the the property is 150 feet away from the nearest wetland, so it's going to be outside their particular jurisdiction. So that would not be something I think necessarily apply on, because there is a water course. That's I think even beyond that, even beyond the wetlands is the water, is the water course. The rest of it, I mean, it's not really shown very clearly on this bigger map. There's about three acres behind the line that you're looking at there. So there's a, it's quite large, just a piece of property as far as, you know, where it's going to actually end up for the most part, the water itself. And obviously, we have a regulation town that we can't send more water off into zero net runoff. So we have to, you know, be sure that when we put our plans in, that the engineers have shown that there's zero net runoff, that whatever runoff we have now can be, we have, once the building is, is constructed.
And the structure of these steps, this is all visible. Looks like it's natural stone, it's a, of course, speech on my part.
No, it's not, it's not natural stone. That is on, I'll let Wayne talk to that, but that is on a detail sheet for the site plan. But I, but I can tell you, for your topic, concrete block, according to regulations, those all have to be screened. So what that means is we have the landscape, all those particular stone walls, but you cannot see the concrete block. So we have a landscape plan that shows screening that's going to be going against those particular stone walls or the concrete stone walls. That's a, that's within the regulations that will require to do that whole stone wall.
So the evidence decided not to skin with yellow stones?
Yeah, my understanding is that you can't do that with these particular retaining walls, but I can let Wayne speak to that. But there's a landscape plan. We are doing all native tenant planning on, on these walls and anything else we're putting in as far as landscape plan goes. I can let Wayne talk a little bit about that. Why we have the concrete there. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, but what was the question about the landscaping and the walls?
Just the fact of why we're using concrete block walls on the retaining walls.
It was a preference really of, of the owner to do segmental block. I mean, it's a good choice. It would, yeah, they're, they're fairly aesthetically appealing and you know, and it lends itself well to, to this sort of, to the slope and to the, the application and the amount, kind of the amount of walls that are, are needed here. It would be kind of difficult to do this as a port concrete wall or really any, any other similar type. It'd have to be something segmental or concrete unit.
The concrete block inspiration, some similar to what we have in some of the paint walls. It'd be each way to the transfer station. I know there's a block straight up, wall that way. I wonder if that's sort of in the government.
Pull up the detail sheet for the site sound.
Just by a point, I guess, or you mentioned the landscape plan.
It's it's not in your particular PowerPoint, but if she. Mentioned, I'll pull that up. That was part of the application. Why that's a question, I'm sure you've heard before. I have heard that, and I have a lot of people know exactly what the landscape is supposed to look like. There's the detail sheet. Excellent, right there. Wayne, do you want to talk to us a little bit about this detail that's being shown right now?
Yes, that's that's the detail for for a typical segmental block. Wall, it shows, you know, the drainage required behind it and. Those horizontal lines are the the geo, the geo grid that I mentioned, which would extend back. In this case, probably three feet or so from from the back of the wall. In their their place typically, that's showing it looks like every four courses, but more typically, it's every two courses. Again, this is kind of a generic detail that's showing really much taller wall than. What we're gonna have, we're gonna have a four foot wall, so that would be, you know, about eight of these. Courses rated these levels, so about. Two or halfway or two thirds what's what's shown there. And you know, it shows the material, the drainage, the free draining aggregate behind the wall and the top is. Compacted and more more pervious. Or more compact, I should say. And that's, you know, it shows the leveling pad for the base and the first two courses are buried and. That that's pretty much what it would look like in section. Except again, that this one's taller than. Than what we would be building. That's pretty much what it would end up looking like.
The landscape plan, sir. Can you pull up the landscape plan? It's not in the PowerPoint, it would be just, it was submitted with the.
So I've got a website?
Yes, yes.
May I have? Two copies of mine. I do agree, yeah. Thank you.
Why and where?
Well, for the most part. They are not doing any additional planning per se along the property. Along the driveways itself, because they're very heavily screened now and there's no plans to take any of that screening out. It's all gonna remain there. As far as the plantings go for the retaining walls, really the design around that, and you don't have to be a lot of plant, landscape architect in today. But the design, the plan around that was basically to hide these walls, which were, which was a part of the application is that. That's something that's required in a retaining wall, it's a big screen. So my assumption is that those are the plantings that we use. We are open to any additional plantings that the commission may want. To recommend. But these particular plants were really designed in order to. Screen stone walls.
Okay, good going, Mr. Rucci.
Okay. I think at this time, so we're finished for the most part with the. Landscape plan, the architecture plan and site plan, so. Neighbors, so I spent a lot of time in the beginning of the presentation on where these properties were, where the screening was, where the houses were. The client, the applicant did reach out to all the neighbors. This has been a project that's going on for quite some time. And had, they had some people came over, some people they wrote notes to, but everybody hasn't informed that this particular piece is a particular project. For the most part, people are not objecting to it. I know that Mr. Novak is in support of it, is one of the neighbors of the property. I talked specifically to Mr. Campbell, to the Campbells a long time ago, but I've not heard from them since then, so I'm assuming that they are okay with it. But the property number two on thirty nine. Mr. Mazza, Peter Mazza, I spoke to him a couple of different times and. I have not been able to work out any sort of agreement for this particular project. He is not happy with it. He did write a letter to the commission. Some of them are perfectly legitimate questions. Which I'm happy to answer now, I think some of them have been answered, but if you look at his August thirtieth, two thousand twenty one. Letter that went in on about the same date. He asked about whether structures are gonna be fifty feet away from this property line. They are. The retaining walls don't need to be, they have regulations ten feet. From property line and we know that they are twenty six and twenty eight feet away, based on what was said earlier. I think one of them is about ten point eight, the rest of them are twenty six and twenty eight feet away. The second question is about the wetlands, which we answered, it's not, so it's wetlands based on where it is. Where the structure is going and basically where the wetland is. He says the owners state they will not multi-stack car lists. When in fact, that was in the original plan. I'm not aware that was ever in the original plan. We're not planning on doing. Any sort of list, that was in the narrative that are presented with the application, this particular application, so. The walls we talked about already, he. They will be, they will match the walls toward houses, the same way the walls are there, but we talked a little bit. Chris mentioned about the concrete, and that's what those are. He says the community guarantees. The space in the ground will not be ready to any other car collectors, thus allowing commercial enterprises in the residential neighborhood. That is absolutely not the intent of the applicant, is no interest in. Anyone using his property other than himself. So if we were going to rent them to someone else, we have to go back to some sort of application for a commercial enterprise and that is not, that is not. He can, but he willing to accept a condition, although you don't need to bring a condition on that particular. Any sort of approval. Environmental considerations, he asked about air quality, traffic, noise, pork chop lot. I don't, I'm not exactly sure what that is, but as I said earlier, there's only going to be four drivers and that doesn't change. Right now, bringing the cars inside, I think would be a heck of a lot better than starting them outside. His property and. He just talks about the fact that we already have three car garages, so we shouldn't have to, he doesn't think it's credible that we would build four more garages to store lawn furniture. We are storing lawn furniture, but we also are storing cars. And I think. We had some additional questions. In a March thirtieth letter when we had originally proposed an accessory structure building, rather than the attached building. So some of them don't apply. Height is only twenty eight feet. Twenty six, twenty eight feet, he thinks it's gonna be forty feet, it's not forty feet. I'm sure he'll comment, I don't want to speak for him. So if I've missed something, I'll come back and and answer that elevator date. I think those were most of his comments, but I'm sure, I know he's online, so if obviously if anything else, I'm more than happy to. Respond to him. Obviously, the intent was for this particular applicant was to work as well as they could with the neighbors and. Obviously, nobody wants to bring an application that sets in your neighbors, but in this particular case, that may, you know, it's not gonna be avoidable. There really should be, you know, honestly, you can't see his house, but when it was built in, you can't see that house now today. The only thing that you can see is the top of the accessory structure that is literally on the property line of our clients, which is his accessory structure. It's two hundred plus feet away from his structure. These are properties that are large, they have larger living spaces, accessory structures and the like and. We believe that this is perfectly legitimate application, report to this commission and. We. While we like to work with our neighbors in any way, shape or form, nothing is going to change. In what our client does, based on whether this this particular building is there or not.
Okay, Mr. Rucci, so is it a five car garage in total or how many, how many total bags?
There will be in total seven, because it's already three and there'll be four.
How many cars could be stored in this new new structure?
I mean, if you, it's a three thousand square foot structure. It's not only to be used for cars, the applicant right now only has a total of seven cars. So I guess they could probably put another. Maybe twelve total. It's a park them all right up there next to each other, you guys, I mean. They are park collectors, I mean, we're not trying to hide the fact that that's what they're doing right now, they don't have a huge car collection. Obviously, you know, there's, I did an application a couple of years ago, somebody had something very similar. Over on Mon tree farm where he he put in a large car spot and I had a client upon. I read the name of the office, oh, no, because it has this, I mean, this is not necessarily something that is shown. I've heard. I have not heard any complaints from these other places, let's put it that way, it doesn't. They may not have neighbors or complain, but I have not heard of any, and I do know that we have at least three or four people in the town that I know. Who have similar types of garages or buildings that are used for cars. It's something that in this particular community, it's. It's one of the sports, I guess. Missions, other questions?
I have a question on the retaining walls, specific within the northeast side as it drops away towards the river or towards the. If the cross section on shape five. There are definitely three terraces of three retaining walls, but one was exceeding four foot high. Two other ones lower down that are lower than four. Not sure if that's a drafting issue or if it looked on the. Site plan, if you're equally spaced. Both in plan and elevation, but. We just want to make sure that similarly on the southeast, you have four retaining walls making up the same drop in elevation, so. Initial. Yeah, right. Chris, could you go to that eight four sheet, please? Eight five, eight five, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so. My walls are straight. So my walls are shown graphically and they're correct based on the site plan measurements, so you have the site plan measurements, you have the height of the walls, not my rocks. So the site plan is correct.
But the site plan is a plan, you're showing a cross section, so. I'm moving.
That's an elevation.
Okay, section elevation. I'm assuming your drawings reflect the heights that are represented in the site plan. Top of the paint wall, right, so. One of your retaining walls is significantly in excess of four feet.
Where are you getting them?
Because you're making up a difference in elevation of. Let's see. Probably dropping a total of. Twenty five feet overall from four side all the way down to the bottom of the paint wall, you're doing a three steps. Do you have a site plan? Does the site plan show top model walls, which is one three foot?
Yes, if you look on the site plan, you show across that top model.
So at one corner, you're five foot high, the other corner, six.
Okay, we have to revise the site plan.
So just relook at the retaining walls and make sure they're not in excess of four feet, because.
Okay, yeah, no problem, we can revise it, make more.
And then. What I'm worried about is the statement that there's no provisions for your air conditioning plant. For collectors, car collectors garage. Being a car nut myself, I find it peculiar. And I would at least like to know. Somewhere on the site plan, knowing that in order to achieve that, you're gonna be putting in some. Mechanical equipment to satisfy that in the future, because it could happen. I'd like to know where that would be positioned. And placed on site, because if it does happen in the future, post construction, it will affect the neighbors. I don't think there's an application that you've done, Mr. Rucci, you've represented a number of these, as you said. All of them are conditioned garages. Honestly, if you don't do that, the value of your cars could be compromised. So I would at least like to see how it's planned for the future, even if you're not putting it in day one.
Something that could be a condition, or would you like to see the ahead of time? I think, I don't know, I can't answer the question as to why that wasn't.
That's that's up to the applicant, but it's something that if it happens in the future, it would impact the. Its its position relative to the property line and how it affects neighbors. Of John. John, you have to come up.
John, me and forty nine North Wolfden Road. I think I'll call it all my life. And I've had mangolages, they're not used, I don't intend on. I never have it all.
Okay, then we're gonna have to put it, just to follow that, we'll have to put a condition on the on the approval if there isn't. If there isn't approval, then any addition of equipment to the site relative to the garage, we're gonna come back.
Okay, any other commissioner questions before we go to the public? Okay, um, would anyone from the public like to address this application? Let's start with in the room. Seeing done, seeing done, then let's wrap.
I would like to object to the, the proposal, if that's.
Hello, hold on a minute, please, let me find out what the man is saying.
If you want to speak for the public, can you raise your hand and press, and we'll let the person speaking through the floor.
I don't know how to do that. This is my first Zoom, so I just don't know how to do that. I'm not very technical savvy. I'm a resident at 612 Laurel Road. I don't know how to raise my hand.
Excuse me, hello, don't worry about it. Just tell us you gave us your address, give us your name and, uh, please.
Okay, my name is Christine Marvin. I'm the owner and resident at 612 Laurel Road. And I'm probably most directly across from the proposed site. And, uh, I have some concerns and objections. Um, the reason why we bought our house was that I have full size glass windows across my dining room, living room, and I would look directly across at this structure that's larger than my own house itself. It's something like 3,500 square feet and my house is barely 3,000 square feet. So it's a very large, uh, structure and I would not want to obstruct any view to look at somebody's garage, which probably is going to be in excess of at least five to 10 cars. I hardly think a building of that size is going to be for putting in lawn chairs. Let's, let's be real. Uh, but that's fine. Uh, but I, I'm also concerned about air pollution and noise pollution and, and light pollution, because I do not want to look outside in my beautiful natural forest and see all kinds of searchlights in this structure that cars would be coming and going. So I do have some concerns about disturbing the nature of the land and the value of my own property by looking across the street at this, at this garage. So I want to make that clear of my objections and the reasons why.
Thank you very much. Uh, would anyone else from the public like to address this application?
Absolutely. This is Peter Maza, 39 North Wilton Road. Um, I have to just tell you, um, what I've done in my lifetime, I don't want to make a big deal about it, but I, I happen to be a professional engineer uh, with more than 50 years in construction. Um, I built such structures at the World Trade Center, for example, when it went down and we rebuilt most of the World Trade Center, uh, as a, as a private contractor. I worked for a very large construction company. Uh, I am a noted expert, uh, in the field of engineering and construction. I don't tell that to you because I want to make my mother proud, but just to tell you that I, I know of which I speak. Um, I, I'm been sitting here for the last period of time. Um, and, uh, I have hundreds of, of, uh, engineering questions that I could ask and some of which I've written down. Uh, but frankly, you've got to go back to March. Uh, the, these people would like to build a garage that could have the possibility of housing up to 24 cars. There, if, if the base, if you've got four car garage and you could put two cars in, in front in the garage in each bay, that's eight cars. And if you've got them double stacks, that's 16 cars. And since the roof and since the in, interior of the building is over 16 feet high, open space, you could stack three cars. So that's 24 cars. Now, the question is, why would anybody do that? Well, these people have already, um, stacked cars in their three car garage. So let's be perfectly frank here. This is not a question about people storing furniture. This is about moving a, what would be a normally a commercial car collection into a residential neighborhood with the potential of renting it to other people or not renting it to other people. It really doesn't matter. The point is, we will never know what's going on over there. Now, as far as engineering goes, could someone put up the structure that, that, um, I guess it's, it's drawing number A4. Can you put that back on the screen? I can tell you a few things from what I've learned in my lifetime. If someone put up A5 on the screen again, I'd be happy to talk to that. Mr. Rucci. Okay.
Please proceed, sir.
Um, what you see here is, um, a graphic representation and there's a CAD machine. We'll, we'll put in something that looks like hand cut pebble stones on the wall. That is not what they're talking about here. What they're talking about is putting a commercial grade, uh, um, stone, not really stone, it's, it's concrete block, basically piled one on top of another with some form of, of support to prevent it from tipping over. Uh, it's possible that the trees that get planted in there, eventually the roots will push out that wall. I built thousands of miles of, of retaining wall in my lifetime. And I can tell you that these are, what they're talking about is a commercial um, situation where you're looking at stone, not stone, as drawn here, but concrete block. It's, it's not appropriate for this particular community. It's not appropriate for, for the backyard view that I'm looking at. And whether, and, and whether there are trees there or not. And whatever trees are there were planted by me on my side of the property. There are no trees on the other side of the property. That, 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 that property was, was constructed within the last 10 years or so, or possibly maybe 15 by now, I'm losing track of time. Speaking of time, I've lived at this property for 42 years. I know every blade of grass. I know every tree, I know every, every, every stone. Um, the view that, that, um, the other lady had been talking about from, in her direction, when she looks back on this structure, she sees a structure that's six, that's, um, uh, according to this drawing, uh, about 20 or so feet tall, 18 plus feet tall. But she's also looking at the base of the, of the, the stone walls that are, that are also, um, protruding. So her view is, is something in the neighborhood of looking at a 40 foot high beast. Although the building itself is, is not quite that high, the building itself, I can't read the drawing, uh, what is, what is written, that's 26 feet, eight inches is what I, I took off the, um, the, um, sketch that, that was, that I, I looked at. So the view and the view that I'm looking at, I'm looking at a, a, a 26 foot, eight inch building and I'm looking at probably another 20 feet of stone wall. Now, could you also maybe please put up um, your architect, your, uh, landscape plan that you had before, where you said the setbacks were to those walls from my property? Or?
You can keep talking, enjoy your service.
That's all right. So, uh, if you, when you look, when, when he finds that drawing where he shows the setbacks, the, I consider those walls to be structures. And if, and, and, and if he's saying the setbacks are 20 feet to the tips of these, the, the walls as I'm looking at, if they're structures, I believe they gotta be back something like 50 feet, not 20 feet. And the proposed garage, I don't know from the corner of the garage to the edge of my property, whether and how many feet that is, but I thought that had to be 50 feet too. I could be wrong. But I don't know what the code says, but I'm sure that, that all you people in that meeting know. The other thing that's missing from this particular drawing is there's a chamber uh, to the left-hand side in the, in the far corner that, that, that there's another wall or a curb or something there. But that chamber is supposed to hold, according to them, 10,000 gallons of water. That's a structure also. And it's like five feet away from my property. So I really, I mean, I, I could, I could go on and, and I, I, I beg you to read my letter.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I, I'm not finished. Also, the back fill that needs to, to, to go behind these walls, they may be bringing in several thousand yards of material to fill the terraces that are created by the wall. That material has got to come up a narrow driveway across the front of my house and up, up North Wilton Road. That's not a good thing. With large trucks bringing in fill and how does the fill find its way back to the wall? It's gotta be, it's gotta be some kind of a pervious fill that goes behind the, the wall itself. So, and they talk about what, how much disruption is going to take place and how many square feet of, of disruption are going to take place. It's not, they're not just disturbing 62 feet by 54 feet, which is the building. You're disturbing everything around it, all the walls, all the way on both sides. The reason why the first application was withdrawn was because they wanted to put 3,300 square feet when the town only allows 1,000 square feet. So they very creatively, with great architects and, and wonderful finagling engineers, says, okay, we'll just attach it to the building barefoot. It's not a separate structure. But the, the ultimate goal here is to store cars. This is not the neighborhood for caffeine and carburetors. This is a residential neighborhood. I've lived here for 40 years. I paid plenty of taxes over 40 years. And I am totally opposed to it. So please, if you, if you want to talk to me some more, I'm happy to give you my expertise. I've been doing it for a long time.
Thank you very much. Uh, would anybody else in the public like to address this application? Let me see, anybody else? Okay, Mr. Rucci, you want to wrap up, please?
Uh, thank you, David Rucci again. Um, as far as Ms. Marvin's concerns, um, you know, if you look at page, uh, eight in the PowerPoint, she's about 525 feet away. There's a lot of woods in between. She, I'm sorry, not page eight, page, uh, nine. There's woods in between two properties. They could build anything, whether this was a garage or anything else here, that would still be sitting in the same spot. And over 525 feet away is a tremendous amount. That's, you know, 10, 15 times more than set back in and of itself. So, um, I don't believe that that's a legitimate, uh, reason to deny this application based on her position at her house. Um, secondly, as for Mr. Mazzas goes, we've been very clear that we are storing cars. We're not trying to hide anything from him. We're not putting lifts in this particular garage. There's no way in the world we're gonna have 24 cars in this garage. We put a condition on this, uh, any sort of approval, that there's no list on this garage. Uh, that is perfectly acceptable to the applicant. That is also in our narrative, uh, to begin with. Um, as far as the concrete block goes, um, that's a, that's a function of how these, uh, how this site is being drawn up. And it will be screened. And if you look at, uh, number three, uh, let's see, sorry. Uh, number seven on your, um, PowerPoint, all you can see from where this is going to be is the top of his accessory building, Mr. Mazzas, which is right on our property line, literally less than a foot away from our property, five feet maybe. You're not going to, he's not going to see anything of this particular building. Um, regardless of, his house is also in front of our building. This is set back from his particular building. So it's highly unlikely, I'm not sure, unless he cuts down all these trees, that he will see anything with this particular, uh, proposed building. Um, as far as the drainage goes, the drainage has been approved. It's going to be approved, uh, will be approved by the town engineer. Uh, that is something that is going to be underground. Um, obviously, we have a responsibility to not only ourselves, but to our neighbors that in fact the, um, uh, water is held and, um, it's dispersed in a proper way. You can't trespass against anybody else's particular, um, property. So I don't have anything, I think that addresses most of his concerns. Um, and, you know, just summing up, once again, these are large properties. These are properties that do hold numbers of different buildings on the site. We are under coverage. All of the regulations are being met as far as zoning goes, other than the special permit request and then obviously the grading permit, um, and fill. And we believe it's gonna fit in fine with this neighborhood. It's a lower building. As is correct, we were, uh, looking to initially do an accessory building. And by attaching it, yes, we were able to, um, accomplish the same, um, uh, proposal that we were trying to get before. That's not something we're trying to hide from this commissioner or anyone else. So in our, it's our position that we're willing to take a, um, any sort of approval. It's this board fills, um, that's the proper way to go. That would have, um, the correction of the drawings Mr. Ratten brought up. Um, that, um, anything in the future we would have to come back with as far as mechanicals go. If we're gonna add heat or, I think, sort of HVAC to it. Um, and, uh, no list in the, um, new structure. I believe that was most of the concerns. Uh, but, uh, if there's something else that any of the commission members like to bring up now, I'm more than happy to discuss with the client or address.
I think we're all set, Mr. Rucci. Thank you, this application is closed. Item number two, 89 Ponus Ridge Road, on application, Dewey and Lynn. Renee Raymond, owners for a special permit for all sections 3, 4, 7, 1, 8, 3, 7, 8, 1, 8, 8, 1, 5, 576 square foot attached garage, front yard of a quarter lot, 3, 4, 5, building coverage rated 137 square feet. I placed a restriction on the land record stating that the height of the 76 square foot garage should be limited to 18 feet. One half stores of anchors on it, 8, 1, Ponus Ridge Road, 0%.
Hey, good, good afternoon, or sorry, good evening. Uh, this is Dewey Raymond, I hope everybody's doing well. Um, I've been living at 89 Ponus Ridge with my wife and three children for about nine years now. We love the area, we love the neighborhood, a lot of young families in that area. Um, and so we'd like to stay here as long as we can. So to do that, we need a, a garage. And to that end, um, the special permit request. So it's essentially in two pieces. The first piece being, um, to construct the detached garage, um, with, in essentially a front yard of our corner lot. Um, uh, thank you for that. Um, so we live on the corner of Ponus Ridge and Hawks Hill. And our driveway is actually on Hawks Hill Road. And if you, if you look at the survey, the proposed detached garage is, is just off the existing driveway, um, right there. So, you know, it's not in an unusual location. It, it's fairly simple. It's only 24 by 24, two car garage. Um, will be used for, um, mine and my wife's car, only two drivers in, in the household. Um, there are no other locations that are really suitable for the garage on the property. Um, we have a buried propane tank on the other side of the driveway. Um, and then along the Ponus Ridge side, we have the, the septic fields, et cetera, and, and, and no existing driveway. So, um, it'll be a, like I said, 24 by 24 slab on grade. Um, materials will be consistent with the, the main single family dwelling, which is a cedar shake siding, architectural asphalt, um, roof. Uh, and then the second piece of the, um, permit application is regarding section 3.7 E1. So that's relief for exceeding the maximum, um, building coverage on the property and will be exceeding it by about 237 square feet. So to remedy that, we would like to, um, limit and, and encumber the property, um, using the entire square footage of the garage, which is 576 feet, which is, you know, a little bit more than the required double square footage, um, in order to accomplish this. Um, some other notes on here, uh, we do have wetlands on the property. The, the garage will not be disturbing them. They're in the upland review area. So we've submitted the, the plans to the wetlands department. They have approved them. Um, we've also designed a stormwater management system with peak engineering, which is. which has been signed off by the town engineer. It'll mitigate any additional runoff from the garage and a little bit of driveway we need to add to actually reach it. Other than that, it, it conforms to all their setback restrictions. So in the single, single acre zone, it's thirty-five feet from the, the neighbor's property or from the street. We've had no objections from neighbors. We've had more encouraging words than, than, than anything else. And if you want to look at the architectural plans, like I said, it, it's very simple. It's just a two-door garage, a, a two, or two-door garage, two cars, twenty-four by twenty-four slab on grade. And it'll fit in with the surrounding homes, et cetera. I don't have much more than that. If you guys have any questions, there, there's nothing extravagant about it. It's, it's just hopefully, it's been a long time coming, kind of getting all this stuff together. We've been working on the house for probably like ten years now. It was abandoned when we bought it. So we've come a long way. And this, I think, will be the final piece to kind of get us to the next chapter with the kids, so.
Thank you, sir. Can I ask you any questions?
John, I would just like to add on. About twelve years ago, I lived next door to that house, and it was abandoned. And now when I drive by that house and I see what they've done, the Raymond seemed to, you know, put a lot of care and interest into their house. And I think this garage should make a really good addition.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Anybody from the public like to address this application? Nobody in the room? Lynn, anybody online?
Do you want to skip out of line for Rick Anderson?
Good? I have one question. Okay. Do you read, I'm looking at, yeah. The proposal will exceed the maximum building coverage by approximately two hundred and forty square feet for certain zoning regulations to cover it for it is twice the size of the additional building coverage. Is this walking a bit more details, I was measuring concrete, exactly what this giveback will look like? I understand that.
Sorry, I couldn't really make that out. You're just asking about the exceeding the building coverage by two hundred and thirty-seven square feet. So therefore, we'd be required to, to limit double that per regulations in order to be granted relief to build the garage. So that would, two thirty-seven times two is five seventy-four, I want to say, if my, my math is correct. So we're just over that by, by limiting the garage itself. The structure of the garage is one point five stories and eighteen feet. It won't be eighteen feet, I think it's fifteen or so as designed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, this application is closed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number three, Public hearing, affordable housing legislation revisions to section seven point six of the New Canaan zoning regulations. Just a, I meant, I want to make is, as I think about this, maybe we, this worded this, it sounds like we're simply trying to follow on some of the legislation and effort just trying to, which way I think about this is not the objective. So I think more consideration of regulation than it's concerned with the affordable housing. And the way I'm thinking about this is some of the reasons why we're doing this is to continue to progress our regulations for, in terms of providing affordable housing. And other towns in Connecticut of our size are implementing such regulations amid this matter. And as commissioners have pointed out, this will also help us potentially improve with eight thirty G requirements. Quite frankly, that's the right thing to do, just a little better than editorial upfront. But Lynn and, and Mrs. Nielsen, would you like to, I think you revisited some of the pieces of the regulation. If you want to take us through that.
Sure, I'll, I'll get it started and then Lynn can chime in as she would like to. So following our July meeting, there were, I think, three major changes that were requested that we went back and made to the draft that was, I guess, there was a link set out to the website. The first change that we discussed at the last meeting was changing the threshold at which these requirements would kick in from four units to five units. And hopefully you can all see that in section three, or seven point six C three is where we've made that change. And then we also eliminated the table. Those of you on the commission who've been following this know the table I'm talking about, where at certain number of units, you had to provide a certain percent of affordable units. We eliminated that sort of scaled structure and went to a flat fifteen percent. So all units at or above five would have to provide fifteen percent of their units affordable. So that change has been made. And one addition I'd like to throw in potentially for conversation tonight, on top of that is I started thinking about smaller multifamily projects, five, six unit projects. If you do the calculation, they don't actually provide a full unit, which means the way things are written, currently, they would just provide that fractional unit as a fee in lieu of payment. And I think we may want to consider requiring unit projects that result in less than one full unit to provide at least one unit of affordable housing and then collect the fractional fee in lieu of, once you get above one unit of affordable housing. And so if you guys are interested in that, I, I do have some language I can propose. The second change that we discussed at the last meeting, I think was at the last meeting, was to change the fee in lieu of payment from three hundred percent of AMI to five hundred percent of AMI. That change has been made. And then the biggest issue, I think, that we discussed at the last meeting was regarding the section on bonuses. And one of the recommendations of the commission was to follow up with Glenn Childler of Planometrics, who had written a report in two thousand and ten about inclusionary zoning and the state's incentive housing zone program. I think I got that right. And so Lynn and I were able to follow up with Glenn to talk about the bonuses that were recommended as part of some inclusionary zoning language in that report and whether they're appropriate for New Canaan in two thousand and twenty-two. And the conclusion was that those bonuses were written, they were required. If you were going to participate in the state's inclusionary housing overlay zone program, you had to give those bonuses. So the twenty dwelling units, units per acre was a regulatory requirement, as was, I can't remember the other things that it said, but those were required by the state statute at the time. And in further conversation with Glenn, Lynn and I came away with the conclusion that those are probably not appropriate for, specifically for New Canaan. I mean, that was a statewide, across-the-board thing. And, you know, every place is unique and probably not appropriate in two thousand and twenty-two. So I think the biggest change you'll see is that we took that language out and basically gave us a real open-ended option for providing leeway to developers who are providing these affordable units and that they can make their case about what kind of standards they need modified. And the commission can use their discretion to decide whether or not to make those modifications. And so anyway, those are the three main changes. Lynn, do you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, I actually covered everything.
So yeah, let's open it up to the commission. I, I do have some other options if these are not the way we want things. But let's first get some reactions.
Commissioner?
This is Commissioner Cassavant. I think that all of the proposed changes make a ton of sense, particularly removing the bonuses. I also think that Krista, you should probably read out the proposed language on the single unit requirement. But I also agree that makes a ton of sense.
Okay. Well, let me just do that now, since you asked, Mr. Cassavant. So basically, I was thinking that under section three, where it says inclusionary zoning requirements, we already have A. I was thinking of inserting a new B and then moving all the letters down. And the new B would read, "When a calculation is performed to determine the number of affordable units to be provided and results in a number less than one, one unit of affordable housing shall be provided." And then I would actually change the, the next section that talks about fractional units to say that when it results in a number that includes a fraction greater than one, the fractional amount shall be provided as a fee in lieu of cash payment.
Thank you.
Can we talk about this? Specifically, section four requirements for the B one or BI. The one-time cash contribution is five hundred percent of the area median income. Change that to three hundred percent. What was the rationale there?
Well, so I'm not sure that's the final number, but that's what we settled on last time. The rationale was, so three hundred percent was a number. I'd taken that language from the town of Darien. They use three hundred percent. So that's where it originally came from. And I think the rationale of the commission is that if we're going to offer the fee in lieu option, we want to at least capture the cost of building the unit. We don't want the fee in lieu option to be cheaper than building the affordable unit. We want it to be as commiserate as we can make it. And someone else can chime in here, but my recollection is that it's fairly expensive in the town of New Canaan to build affordable units somewhere upward of four hundred thousand, maybe five hundred thousand dollars. So that is the conversation that led us to the five hundred percent last time.
This is Commissioner John Chris, Commissioner Nielsen, I thought it was correct. Keep with my recollection, because that would start with the area median income percentage number and then compare that to the likely reasonable cost of a dwelling unit. And then you multiply up. And the idea was that the difference in, in cost between constructing a unit and the, the cash value of the unit percentage, your fractional, would be essentially a wash. Now, what exactly is the cost of unit? Again, you can stick a pin in it down to the last penny, but we're trying to make a reasonable, appropriate, thoughtful estimation of that. And this is how we arrived at five hundred percent. And it's Commissioner Cassavant mentions, to make this essentially neutral between a unit and the cash value of that unit. So that builder or other is not incented one way or another. It becomes essentially a war, it's essentially a wash, too, to, to, that's the concept here. We also discussed that in time, there's inflation in the cost of construction and land and so forth. And that over time, we may need to revisit these particular calculations in order to make them reasonable and meaningful for urban economics. I'm sure this commission will take up that challenge, of course. As, I'm sorry, for this period, the view is that the five hundred percent is an appropriate number. So I'm done, thank you. James Bash, so a developer or an architect would know, we answered this better than I explained. What was the question? Whether or not the initial cost of one or, one or more unit will be significantly different than the marginal cost of each unit thereafter? Repeat question. So whether or not the initial cost of just having one portable unit would be significantly different than the marginal cost of each affordable housing unit thereafter? So is your marginal cost of your third, fourth, or fifth unit significantly different than the cost of that initial unit?
Depends on the project, depends on scale and the the number of units that you're going to, if you're developing, six or seven units and you're forced to build an affordable unit, the, the percentage of costs that you're going to be, that's going to be impacting the project cost overall is different than if you're building, you know, fifty units and you're forced to build seven.
Do you think then, Mr. Radman, that it makes sense to, that this percentage should change depending on the size of the development, the number of units?
Yeah, what I'm worried about is that five hundred percent is going to disprove development of the smaller scale, which we have lots of opportunities here in this town for smaller scale projects of three, four, five, six units on a person. Especially in the apartments that are down comes up. I'm more comfortable with the three hundred percent, personally.
Well, this is Claire, just going ahead, Commissioner. We, we need to make up our mind because, you know, two months ago, it was three hundred percent. And last month, one of the commissioners suggested five hundred percent and gave good reasoning. So we changed it. Now we want to go back. We, we need to make up our mind. You know, like, we can't go every other month saying, oh, three hundred, five hundred. Let's, let's discuss it and decide and stick to the decision.
Would, how do people feel about a tiered approach such as Mr. Bash and Mr. Radman suggested? And I, I'd be open to the conversation about what that tiering looks like. But does it make sense to charge less of a fee in lieu for smaller developments than for larger developments? And is that a way to kind of split the middle ground?
Possibly. I, I just think we have to do something that isn't artificially creating a hardship on a smaller developer.
I, I have a question for maybe Dan in Art. If, if you're building an affordable unit in New Canaan, it's going to cost five hundred thousand dollars, right? But you can scale that down with the more affordable units that you build, or more units that you build?
It, it all depends on the project. If you're looking at, if you're looking at the, the buildings that were built down on, what is that? Wherever, you know, across from the, on the, so. Those were multiple units in a larger structure. You're, if you're talking about a per-unit cost, it's significantly less than five hundred thousand. If you're looking at, you know, a cluster building development of, of homes that are attached that are, you know, four or five units that are larger, it could be well over five hundred thousand. It, it, it all depends.
I, I could observe, this is Commissioner Cassavant, that in the case of the projects we have done in town so far, all have been advantaged because there has been virtually no land cost. The reason we sort of circle back to the five hundred thousand is that there is very little availability of land in town. And if you need to create incremental units, it's not really the construction cost of the unit where fit and finish can change. What you have to do is you're going to have to acquire land. And our discussion last month was about the implication of going to five hundred percent provides enough money to potentially buy the land and build the unit. The risk is if we allow developers, and, and I, I'm not a genius as to whether three hundred or five hundred works. But if you set the fee at a level that is not persuasive, we as a town can end up with the problem of having to acquire the land to meet the eight thirty G requirements without sufficient funding. And the problem will be that as you go through the need to get to eight thirty G, with each incremental unit, if we have less than ten percent, we lose ground as a town.
So just as a follow-up to that, Mr. Cassavant, one, the reason why I was thinking whether the marginal cost would decrease as you have more units, is precisely what you mentioned. It's the initial upfront cost of the land. It would cause that marginal cost to go down. I would think, on average, more units you have. And so to, like Mrs. Nielsen was saying earlier, do we then want to take a potential tier approach to that, to that percentage?
I, I would respond, Commissioner Bash, this is Commissioner Cassavant again, that the issue that we need to address is to ensure that we get units developed and made available. The real cost to the developer is actually not the construction cost. It is the land use restriction agreement, normally running for minimum of fifty, probably ninety-nine years, that limits the amount of revenue achievable by the apartment. It's not the construction cost that really drives this. It's what happens when you put a LURA on that property that says that the owner cannot collect that revenue. So for them, you know, the risk to the town, once again, So for them, you know, the risk to the town once again becomes that we collect a little bit of money. The developer then is freed from the obligation and the town is left with the need to remediate the gap created by those four net new housing units. So even the notion of going from four to five has some risk for the town, though I totally concur with that recommendation because it protects small developers. But each time you, for example, if you had a series of four unit buildings built and none of them have eligible tax, eligible income, eligible properties, then we as a town in aggregate end up down another unit. And if we somehow have to acquire land, we have a problem.
I'm, this is Commissioner John Chris. I'm, I'm still leaning towards the 500%. At some point, you gotta pay for things. And as Commissioner Cassavant notes, construction costs in New Canaan are substantial. I mean, you say you live in New Canaan, you have a bumper problem, you get the price of prior price sometimes. Also, land is extremely expensive too. And as he rightly notes, the affordable housing we do over this in town is essentially free because it's owned by the town. And that certainly cuts down your cost. It's very low cost, not the occupied land market. It's a different conversation. So I think there's necessity to have the appropriate amount of funds in order to ensure that we are financially capable of financing and providing this type of affordable housing. So I am leaning forward towards the 500% figure.
This is Dan Radman. Again, I'm just concerned that it's, it's setting up a situation where only the larger developments are going to be the ones willing to dip their toes into the, into the development of larger quantity of units. Whether it be something like, you know, the view that was built or, you know, dedicated number of affordable units or it's, it's a river or something like that. The, the smaller developments are going to look at this. You know, if they're building five or six units and they're going to be dropping 500% of the median income, median income these days, and it's, I think, under 30, under $40,000. So you're, you're at three quarters of a million dollars just so you can build what your project, the project we want. And some developers will walk away from that. They won't do that. So now we need set up a situation where only the largest of the developments are going to get built. And to your point, Mr. Cassavant, there's very little land left in town for those large developments. There is land in town, zone currently, that smaller developments can build like this. We've seen one at the corner of Heritage Hill and Locust, right? That, that application next to the Locust Avenue parking lot, that application came before us a couple of times. A builder and developer of that scale would probably think twice. Well, it, we have to guess, we that's Commissioner John Chris can be pressing for 15% of units. So that's essentially if seven, they'll have 1.05 units. So end of the unit number, so one unit. So it's below that percentage. To the extent you are saying that a, a, a development with defined units must have at least eight units. That means it's more than the 15% in that way the map works. And so in effect, by, by saying you have to start with a whole unit and then you only can do fractionals when you go above or below the unit, it changes the economics for those below or below seven units. Since that's for the break point, that's for the 15% of seven is 1.05. That's quite accurate. So by simply saying, so a full unit, we pay the what's called fractional percentage, in effect, will lower the cost. What I argued originally is that what we had in the grid, which was, which is not included anymore, is that the break points. So if let's say 10% of the units, but don't charge anything for fractional, in effect, you're, you're biased to make a larger development because your, it's called affordable housing for slower. So this way, regardless of whether, regardless of the number of units, the, the fee is the same, whether it's in form of unit or the form of cash payment to the affordable housing. This was the concept. It's not the same. It's, it's obviously going to be greater if it's a, a the factor is a 500% factor versus a 300% factor.
I agree with that.
Saying your, your rationale on, and I agree with that, but I just
So James Bash, so Ms. Nielsen, do you know what our surrounding towns, comparable towns are doing? Because again, what Mr. Radman, Chris are pointing out, it's just a balancing act. It's, you know, we're not going to refine it to the point of perfection ahead of time. Maybe the best way to do it is just to figure what comparable towns are doing. At the end of the day, what we're trying to do is create more report laws. So what is the percentage that's most, most likely to?
Right. So this, this calculate, using area median income as a calculation to collect your fee in lieu of was one of a huge menu of options. I mean, basically every place I saw surrounding us does it slightly differently in terms of how they calculate the fee in lieu of calculation. And they can be very complex. They can require annual updating to your, you know, some sort of addendum to your ordinance that tells you how you're going to calculate it based on the change in the area median income in the last year. This, I thought, was simple, but the only place that I saw that used this method of calculation was Darien, and Darien uses the 300% number. I mean, one option I hear, if, if tiering is something we're talking about, I mean, I actually, I hear two different things. One is perhaps my language about saying that units, developments building five to seven units have to provide at least one unit as opposed to the fractional fee in lieu of. Maybe that is making it too expensive and maybe, I mean, the reality is if we, if we don't put that language in, then we will only get a fee in lieu payment, a fractional fee in lieu payment for five and six unit projects. And maybe we're okay with that. But we won't get a full unit. The other option I hear is that maybe we tier it. I'm just playing with numbers right here, right now. I don't pretend to have the answer, but five to seven units pay 300% of area median income, seven to 10 units, 400%, 10 plus, 500%. I'm just throwing out some options.
Oh, but rest of taxes, Commissioner Chris, that suggested for larger developments. Which you said, Commissioner Nielsen, I think.
I'm sorry. I missed what you said, Mr. Chris. Could you repeat?
Yeah. So for example, what you suggested, if I understood it correctly, Commissioner Nielsen, is that if you have eight, I picked the numbers, 40 unit developments, the number of affordable units you may contribute be higher than 20 unit or 10 unit, etc.
Yeah, I mean, I was taking a more micro approach to that. I, I was suggesting that really we only do the tiering of the area median income percentage for fee in lieu for smaller developments. So and I have no idea what Mr. Radman thinks is a smaller development versus what I think is a smaller development, but based on the fact that we're only going to get one unit potentially for a five unit, six unit, or seven unit project, I was looking at 300% of area median income being used as the number for the fee in lieu calculation. And then I went to 400% for seven to 10 units and back to our 500% for 10 plus units. So it's, it's looking only at the lower end of the spectrum, really, is what I was approaching, but I'm open to thoughts.
Could I just, this is Commissioner Cassavant again. One of the concerns that I have is that we have a whole bunch of seven and eight unit buildings developed, which in aggregate add a lot of units of housing to our overall housing stock, but only put a little bit of money in the bin. And then we don't have particular experience as a town building housing, nor do virtually any of the communities in the whole state of Connecticut. So to begin with, and I've, I've seen this in meetings in this specialty up in Hartford, there are very few towns that have the capacity to actually deliver the affordable housing. So the risk that we run with all of this is developers build housing, architects design it, banks finance it, but the town is not particularly well suited to finding the land and developing and building that affordable housing. So our real incentive in order to deal with the issue is to make sure that every single time any new unit is built, we deliver one tenth of those unit numbers. And, and the risk to us is that we worry too much about these small developments and we end up with four or five buildings with six units each or four or even five units each, adding 24 net units to the housing stock, which requires us to come up with an incremental three or four units. And we already have a deficit as a town, which has been made worse by the, the views, you know, net addition to the denominator. That's why, and whilst quite sympathetic to Commissioner Radman's concern about cost, what we really need is, is, is something that incents developers to agree that it's far better for them to build the unit, not, not for the town to try and do this. I cannot imagine that in a town like ours that we will staff a department which will wander around trying to find real estate and then propose to use town funding or apply for state housing tax credits in order to build these units that need to be delivered.
This is Commissioner Just Scornia. Isn't that what the Housing Authority does, Art, in town?
New Canaan Housing Authority has in fact delivered units of housing. But each of the units of housing that have been delivered have, have, and if you look at the stages, beginning with New Canaan Mill and then New Canaan Mill two and the current process going on on Route 123, is existing projects that have existed in most cases since 1950 were converted, in one case, in the case of New Canaan Mill, we took down dilapidated housing and we actually purchased units manufactured in Pennsylvania, which were delivered on site. The second phase of that project was similar. Again, we took old town property and put new units, in that case, stick built on. And in the current project over 123, we were able to add, I think the correct number is 54 incremental units to the 50 that existed. It might be 52 and 56. But the gap for us, and NYCHA has done that, New Canaan Housing Authority has done that effectively, but there is no more land that I am aware of to do that. So in all three cases, in the first case, New Canaan Mill, we did for $180,000 per unit delivered cost for the units itself because they were pre-manufactured housing. In the second case, the housing cost rose dramatically because they were stick built. In the current case, they're significantly more and, and had significant cost advantages because of site advantages on 123 and the fact that the land was functionally zero cost compared to overall unit. We don't have old school buildings. We don't have old mills and we don't have other buildings that are frequently converted to affordable housing and provide the ability to do it that I'm aware of in town. So as you look at the development patterns over the last decade in town, particularly the view where we added 100 units, none of which qualifies as affordable, needing another 10 units of gap for us, we just have to be aware of that. And, and, and we have been able, by the multiple projects in town or total, to close some of the gap and get the moratorium. But our problem going forward will be where will you get the land to do this?
This is John. I, I take your point, Commissioner Cassavant. I think it's very helpful, me and Wayne and Wise, what I, what I'm hearing from you was that if we require actual units to be built when a, another group of dwellings are being built on the market rate, units come out of the ground, the portable units come out of the ground at the same time or delivered at the same time. To the extent it's just a cash payment to the town, then there's a cash key built up in the town. Then the town has to find, find land, probably has to come to the planning zone, to approve something, has to have the, has to have the Housing Authority involved, has to hire builders and all this, all of which could be very time consuming delay. And so the quickest way to ensure that available units are coming out of the ground to be leased is simply to require that they be built when everything else is built. By summarizing you correctly, sir.
Remarkably accurately. Thank you, Mr. Chris.
So if you really want to put the ball on the net, sports metaphor, which I hate, but I'm different anyway, a requirement that actual units be built in conjunction with market rate units. That's where we absolutely know we're getting a unit that counts towards 830G, that is putting people of more modest means into nice housing. This is the way to ensure that that happens. That's the quickest way and probably the most definitive way, if I understand you correctly, sir.
This is Mr. Cassavant again. Yes, and I would add only one feature is that using a medical metaphor here, above all, we should do no harm to that critical calculation of how we're doing against 830G, meaning that each time we have a request for an approval, we should ensure that the create, the numerator doesn't get worse as a result of an approval that we have made. Now, you know, and, and of course, that gets back to my, my core concern, which is if we do a bunch of five and six unit buildings and suddenly we end up with four or five of those at a point in time and we have 24 new units in the denominator and we haven't added the three required units, we then have a critical replacement issue.
Okay, so I, I'm not sure where we stand. It sounds like we're a little split on the fee in lieu of calculation. Are there any other comments besides the fee in lieu of piece on the changes?
I mean, just, Chris Herring here, I, I just wanted to put some more, you know, voting power behind the concept of building units when private developers are building the units. I, I do think that, you know, I don't think the town should get in the business of development. I don't, you know, want Waveney Park, you know, turned into a police station so we can put affordable housing at the police station. Like, I just don't think the town is that creative in all of that, those different trade offs. So I do think we should have private developers taking small units, whether it be on VD Street, Pine Street, some of these other smaller sectors and shoehorning housing there around transit, which is where it makes sense. And so the thing that I guess I'm a little at odds with, I think, some of the others on the commission is that when Mr. Cassavant pointed out that land costs are at the premium in New Canaan, one of the things that, that I don't seem to have a problem with, but I think some others do, is the idea of reducing the parking requirements for larger buildings downtown. And that effectively reduces the cost of land. Because if you don't have to have parking on site in Pine Street, for example, you, you can therefore, you know, take a first ground floor that may have otherwise be, you know, spent against covered house, covered parking and use it for, you know, residential space, which effectively creates, you know, low cost square footage. And I'd like us to explore that. The other thing that I definitely want to keep on the table is the side of the you know, the, the tax credit aspect of it. I, I was a little worried with, you know, the density and the loom factor of some of the, the density units. And I, I'm a little concerned about the setbacks. So I guess I'd have to go back and look at that criteria a little more closely to understand. But, but those are the two pieces I would think, Chris, that I would love to understand a little more about just the idea of whether people are open to the idea of relaxing the parking requirement for downtown and whether that would be something that we would entertain. And secondly, that the tax, whether we would put for something that the, the board, the town council would approve as to a as, as to a tax credit for affordable housing.
This is Commissioner John Chris. You know, my plan's pretty frequent. I wonder if you just can't park there. The part of that Bridge Hill, no. Where are you going to put the cars? And, you know, unless the town in its infinite wisdom wants to build or triple debt a lumberyard, make great centrally commercial structured parking for downtown residents, I don't know where else you put the cars unless you do it on site.
Well, I will tell you that, that one of the, one of the things I learned on the parking parking commission, and I learned from a, a article that I read numerous times, is the high cost of free parking. And the, the concept, and, and if you read some of the earlier urbanists, they talk about the ideas, if, if you don't, if you create more roads, more traffic is created, and if you shrink roads, the traffic doesn't go away, it maintains the same level, so water finds its, its level. So my point is, if, if you have less parking, you have fewer cars. And if people know they don't have a space to have a car, they won't buy it. And so if it's too difficult to have a car, again, we're talking about folks that may have the option of having two cars, but choose to have one, especially if it's on Pine Street. So my, my point is that they'll make that distinction or that decision when they buy the property. And perhaps the property will be less, less costly as a function of the fact it has one parking spot.
Yeah, this, this, so, so James, I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Cassavan was saying, just trying to get to, like, what's, where, what's the destination? So is the thought that maybe we eliminate fee-in lieu for developments that are certain radius from a transit-oriented development? I mean, Mr. Cassavan, I'm open to your suggestions, because I think you, you have the in-house expertise of anyone on this commission. And so what you suggest, there's a lot of weight, and a lot of the sales center doing all the work that she has. So where should we wind up in terms of the deliverable that you think would incentivize developers to do what the intent of this is, which is to build more affordable housing?
So if it were, i- if I were just looking to resolve this, what I would do is split the difference, go to 400%. I would never give up on parking, and I'll tell you why. My experience with affordable housing is that people who live in affordable housing, and most of it is leased, it's never purchased, is that people who live in affordable housing need their cars to go to work. And they don't have any choice about whether or not they drive a vehicle to go to whatever job it is that they have. I would never give up on the parking, and I've seen this in numerous urban and non-urban projects, even in places like New Haven, Hartford, and Bridgeport. People need parking, and they don't have a choice. It's not a selection. They gotta go to work. And, you know, the, the issue that I, I, I'm not smart enough, and I think Krista's done amazing work here, I can't tell you whether 300 or 500 is the number. I do know that in the city of Stamford, you, if you build a project, they're very simple. You've got to either build a proportionate 830G unit, or you can deliver another one that's eligible within the city of Stamford. And it happens all the time. So in Stamford, somebody doing a 30-unit building, they got to deliver four units. Somewhere else, they frequently do it somewhere else in town. We don't happen to have that flexibility. So, a- and I know this sounds a little preachy, but we have to deal with this issue. This is a good baseline proposal. I'm not smart enough to know whether 300 or 500 is the right number. But what I want to do is incent everybody who's going to build in town to think that they've got to deliver the unit, because that's the only way we will deal with the 830G issue over time.
And, and then is there any area within town, or all the town, where you would eliminate fee-in lieu?
There's, in, in my case, no. If it's being, I believe that this proposal was going to apply only where there was city water and sewer downtown. And so in effect, what we're saying is we're limiting it to our downtown core where development is likely. And therefore, we're in a constrained space. But that's the only place we could put the housing if we have to deliver it, right? That's the real problem. I don't know if, if the folks who are in the New Canaan Housing Authority have another target site in mind, but I'm not aware of one that could be developed for affordable housing and be competitive with a private market development project. And Commissioner Radman would be much more qualified than me to comment on that.
John Chris, I would concur with you, Mr. Cassavan, kind of the party. For over 20 years, my household, we had only one functional car, and I'm still married, you know. People may have other reasons to marry, I'm still married, but let me tell you, it doesn't work very well with a single car. And if you, if you're working adults, you need two vehicles, working vehicles in most of all cases. And so I think compromising on the parking issue, particularly in our downtown area where parking is already a challenge, I just see that as really inappropriate action taken. So compromising on the parking is something I would find very difficult to define. As far as the, both the wire with 300, 400, 500, I tend to be biased, tend to be more amenable to a higher number, simply because I think things are generally more expensive than first think they are. And, you know, affordable housing costs money. But very sympathetic to Commissioner Cassavan's comment, that the best way to ensure that there is an actual habitable, affordable housing unit coming out of the ground, requiring the consent of the ground in function of all the market, that strikes me as just a lot of common sense.
This is Krista. Just to address Mr. Herring's comment about the parking, I mean, I'm not going to address it from a philosophical perspective, but the change that we've made in terms of eliminating the bonuses that were previously in here, if you look at, I guess it's currently E under Section 3 Inclusionary Zoning Requirements. I took this language straight from the town of Westbrook, and, you know, I can't, I didn't speak to anyone there, so I don't know how it works for them, but it seems like it gave us a very open-ended opportunity to negotiate with developers who are including these affordable units in terms of what they need to make the project work. Parking is not off the table necessarily in there, but it's not necessarily on the table. Density, you know, in, is on the table. You know, it, this leaves it open for them to come to us and say, here's what I need to make this project work. And then, you know, we say yes or no, or, you know, we don't like that, could you try this? And it, it becomes a negotiation. And so that is currently how we're dealing with bonuses. But it sounds like there's some people, I mean, I don't know that we need to settle the parking issue tonight. I think it's a, it's a philosophical debate, and obviously it'll get played out over time if we include this language in here, because I guarantee you, there will be people coming to us asking to decrease the amount of parking, because as Mr. Herring pointed out, it is a real cost for land.
Commissioner Chris, again, I would, I applaud Commissioner Amielson for putting out E to us, which is, says, just to be really correct, in accordance with Section 8, Direction 2i, I, I, the commission may modify any developmental standard or other requirement that would unreasonably impair the economic or physical feasibility of constructing a development providing for the minimum number of affordable housing units required by this section, next subsection, since pending supplemental commission, they may by special permit later reduce specific requirements of the entity's self-division of affordable housing units. The way I'm reading that is that it applies enormous amount of flexibility to be planning its own, make decisions by market, anything from currently on the zoning or appeals and now finding zoning commissions, that each mailbox is different. And you have to take each on its own merits, and the exact location, what adjacencies are, geography and everything else, it could be different. And this provides this commission with the flexibility to make intelligent thoughtful decisions that are specific to the particular development. I see this as, as a very well-stated language that I can easily support.
John Goodwin speaking. Krista, you have enough ammunition. We're going to open this up to the public as well.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think that's enough from the commission. Let's hear what the public has to say, and then we can talk about where we go from here.
Okay, let's start with the room. Anybody that would like to address this, Mr. Sweeney?
A little background, a little later in the evening, we'll be discussing, by way of pre-application, a property Dobbs had, which almost fits almost right exactly to the colloquy that I heard on Monday, see, considering a new application, and also bringing into account the affordable housing, the affordability regulation that you're considering. What it did was confront the exact same conversation with my client, and how do we work this? What is the medium ground to encourage affordability, which we've agreed with you on, this is something that should be done in Canaan, but also not to fill the balance out of the wax so that we issue or stifle development, which we would all like to see, particularly in those sites downtown that I think are sort of focused on a little bit, that might be prime for this. So forgive the late notice for coming to this a little bit late today, but it was only prompted by the fact that we actually have a case study, which might actually be helpful to you. Again, the exact same discussions that you all had this evening, involving various expertises including Mr. Cassavan, is the exact same conversation that we've been having, trying to figure out how this would work with the application that's actually being considered now. So what we did in the last few weeks is retain Rick Redness to join our team, and I'm going to introduce him now to, to give you our thoughts on it, and where a developer might be looking at it from a different direction that he's going to be touched on tonight, but what you might find interesting. Mr. Redness is with Redness and Lee, he's been working on inclusionary zoning for 40 years. He's from Stanford, Westport, Darien, truly worked in all the towns. He can speak to you about how the regulations work in all of the area towns. He's a certified land planner, and he was on the governor's task force recently when he was considering the handling of the more important points of work on the 830G regulation statute. He's also involved in Westport. Westport recently obtained a moratorium, and he was working on seven of the 10 projects in Darien, or actually in Westport, rather, around the table at that point when Westport was, you chose this moratorium. So I think what you may be helpful with your supplemental information, as you pick through these issues of regulation, again, there's the exact same issues that we've been struggling with as well. So, Mr. Redness.
Thank you, Mike. Rick Redness for the, for the record. First of all, I applaud you for taking on this task. It's not easy, it's complicated. There are a few things just listening to you tonight, that I think maybe I can help some of your balancing points that you're trying to reach. So just in terms of the funding, the money, Darien is 300% of the state median income, not the area median income. So that's around 300,000. Westport is 225% of the area median income, which is the 152,000, which comes out to be 342,000. And Stamford used to be a formula like that, they've recently gone to per square foot. So it's $250 per square foot, so 250,000 per thousand square foot unit. So I think in terms of, again, just sticking to the money, because you focused on that for quite a while, $760,000 fee-in lieu, you will, in my opinion, probably never see, certainly on any rental project. When I see in Canaan, and, and Westport is similar, where you're talking about over $1,000 a foot for housing, maybe somebody would, if they're going to sell something for $2 million, would pay something like that for a condominium, to, in order to be able to build the condominium and summon out a deal after acquiring the land, getting it approved, and building it, that they'd rather, they can make more than 750,000 per unit, and therefore they pay. But that's pretty rare, and we've all forgotten that two, three years ago, there were houses that were dropping 10%, you know, of every few months in order to try to sell. We had a pandemic that was a silver lining blessing in terms of housing pricing, and people wanting to be in places like downtown Canaan. But certainly, from a rental standpoint, you will never see anything like that, because, think about it, you have your regulations, zones, that don't allow you to build more than 1,500 square foot units. So if you have a $760,000 jig, that's $500 a square foot. That's bizarre. So, and keep in mind, with 830G, though, and, and we tried, I was on the commission when we established it, I still think they keep making it a little bit better, but there's still more work to be done with that. But they're not units, they're housing equivalency. So that if you produce a three-bedroom that is at 40% of the state median income, you get three points. That one unit is equal to three housing equivalent points. New Canaan will never, ever, ever, in any of our lifetime, get to 10%. So there is no sense in looking at the numerator, denominator situation. You've got to focus on points. How can you accumulate points? And you do that, rental units get a half a point per unit more than condos. So you want to encourage rental units. So you want to encourage, depending upon your goals and objectives. So for example, there's not many units that get built that have three bedrooms. Many communities don't want three bedrooms because they encourage schoolchildren, and that's another whole issue, particularly now with the pandemic. I don't know what it's like in New Canaan, but I do a lot of work in Westport, and they've got hundreds of new kids coming in this year, hundreds, because of what's happened with the pandemic. So if, if your schools are okay, and you're not worried about that, your three-bedroom affordable units generate the most points. But if you, if not, if you don't want to go to the bigger units, that's fine, you can go down in the income level and generate more points. So, so there's many, many tools, and, and we've used a lot of tools in a lot of different communities. And parking is very important. I certainly agree that you don't want to have no car. But Donald Shoup's book on, on free, high cost of free parking is definitely instructive. And we don't want to overpark, particularly when you have mixed-use development, or you have areas that have extra parking built in somehow that can be shared. There's a variety of ways to do that. We've also introduced various parking management strategies. Shared vehicles, right? We've recently introduced shared vehicles, particularly with affordable housing. If a rental project provides a car free, all you have to do is put the gas in, that counts for four spaces in Stamford, Connecticut, where we wrote that regulation. So, and, and people were happy about it, people had reviewed it, so we outreach to people, and they said they would give up their car if they had access to a free car. They don't use it every day. So you need, there's lots of tools out there like that. We need to valet, car elevator, stackers, there's so many different ways that you can increase your capacity to serve vehicles without having these draconian parking regulations, and also make buildings not as attractive, because you got to put it somewhere. So, and, and if you want to hide that, as you have bonuses, and a lot of people do, they go over load, but then they get extremely expensive. So there's lots So there's lots of tools, I would encourage you not to just rush forward and try to make these decisions, I think, and I apologize for being late to the party here, but I think there are lots of ways that you could do what you're trying to do much more effectively. And so, and I also, we have a lot of attorneys in, in the audience here, I think you have a Mackenzie problem with having virtually no standards. I'm very flexible, I love flexibility, but you have to have some standard, some guidance that then you can relax from under certain circumstances. But to have a standard that is basically no standard, I think is subject to an easy government attorney, you've got lots of them in there, they can comment on, on running afoul of Mackenzie with what you're doing. So I would caution you not to rush to do this, to take a little bit more time and have something that would be useful and, and effective. So rentals are different than condos. And the other, the other issue in terms of getting creative in terms of finding land and putting, well, there's so many things you touched on that I picked out, but maybe that's enough for, for one night. I'd have to answer any questions. Any questions?
I, I did have a question, just in the point structure that the speaker was highlighting. Is there a, are there other, let's call it external factors, whether it be, you know, net zero design, you know, smaller scale, other areas that give the town more points or get, get the town to the end that we're looking to get to, i.e. workforce housing, that you could expound upon or ref point us to?
Sure. And I'll try to use examples from Westport, because that's a little bit more analogous than some of the things that you've done in Stanford. What we just finished in Westport was renting special needs houses. This is for mentally challenged, and so we created a regulation, and Darien did a similar thing, where, and a group home can be for six unrelated adults living, and that's allowed by RIG, everywhere in Connecticut. By adding a kitchenette and a private bath, it became a unit. So we wrote specials, and in this case it was a historic building that we could adapt, we reused, put a little addition on, and created special needs housing, which is below the 40% threshold for state median income. So they're each, they get two and a half points for that. So we took the funds, off-site funds, at the, the Westport level, which is the 200, Westport was at 342,000. So we took those funds and used it to essentially purchase, but it turned out to be a long-term lease, of a city-owned property, town-owned property, that the town was trying to sell. It was like a Vine Cottage type thing, but this was on a school rent. And there, there's no traffic, no drive, minimal parking and maximum benefit in terms of points and in terms of a very underserved population in town. So there's that. There's supportive housing, which is transitional from homelessness, which is, you know, again, Westport has a homeless shelter and they need transitions. We have needs at every income level. We also created workforce housing at 110% of the area median income, because you want to serve people at a lot of different income levels. So those are tools that you could and should incorporate into what you're doing, they're tried and true in towns similar to yours. So I would encourage you to do that, so it's not always about the points, and you can try to equalize any more points by dropping the income levels of fewer units. Anybody else?
This is Commissioner Cassavan. I actually think that the, the speaker just actually validated the need for our rules to be almost immediately implemented. In my experience, there are virtually no three-bedroom units anywhere in the state. The state qualified application plan for allocation of tax credits is even written in a way that discourages those, and we already have in our existing affordable stock here in New Canaan, a complete collection of workforce-based housing, which was part of one of the four projects we have already done in town through NICA. So with respect, and, and to the comment where the speaker began with the notion that we will never get to 10%, that's actually not a statement that I believe is the mission of what we are trying to do here. Our objective is to get to that 10% threshold, and in fact, cause new construction to help us to get to that. We're not looking for new construction to remediate gaps that currently exist. I'm quite familiar with the allocation formulas and I, I don't also agree with the speaker's commentary that you shouldn't just look at the unit counts, though the unit counts are not the end game, they are a critical functioning factor that helps you to determine how to get to where you are going. Thank you.
So if I could ask, what, how many do you need, how many units of affordable housing do you need to get to 10% in Canaan?
Excuse me, I, I, I don't want to get into that debate.
Oh, I wasn't in debate, it was a question. Sorry.
Does anybody else have, boy, any questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else like to address, Mr. Stone?
I would like to speak, I have my hand up.
Hold off, please. Glenn, are people muted down there? Yes, Paul Stone, Car Society, just very briefly, I just wanted to say, applaud the commission for taking up this very important issue and trying to diversify the housing here, and also wanted to echo a lot of what Rick said, I agree with a lot of it, some of the things that, especially what Dan had said regarding the P and L, I think it would really discourage, as a developer, I think it would truly discourage developers at the level that's being proposed right now. I've heard some of the, some of the levels in other towns that Rick has mentioned, and I think that we will see a hang from any of these developers. So I think that's truly important, and so we really truly are trying to have more affordable housing and workforce housing and all these other types of housing, and we really want to encourage development. I think a big component of that is density, because, you know, housing, why is it not affordable because the price is going, why is the, why are the prices going up? Materials costs escalating, and this is all pre-COVID, that's been in place for a long time. And one of the main techniques to overcome some of that, that price escalation and the cost of house is get greater efficiencies in construction, which means greater density. And so we have to have well-placed appropriate density throughout, but we've got to get our heads around the idea of allowing clear density, and I think there's sort of this historical resistance to it, where just people don't like change. So I think this commission taking up this very important issue can be very instrumental in guiding that change so that it is appropriate, but also accommodates the much-needed efficiencies that construction, and what it can achieve as far as affordability and construction can pass down to the actual people living in those spaces. So I agree with quite a lot of what Rick said, and I agree with Dan Radman about, let's not have this P and L so high to discourage, discourage developers.
Okay, well, I think, question, yeah, that's a question, yeah. So, I think it would be helpful at this point to kind of have a better understanding of what general parameters we need to be thinking, and it's helpful to have expertise from developers to help guide us in that. So what is, what are some basic parameters that you've heard debated tonight that you would suggest that you think might facilitate?
I think the parking is big as well. We, we built 16 Cross Street, sort of as a prototype to, to understand a lot of things. Among those things that we learned is that we had more parking than, than we actually need, and so you can overpark, I think there is such thing as overparking. I think that's a huge thing, I think Commissioner Herring, I talked about that earlier today, allowing some flexibility there, because that is a huge, is a huge constraint on affordability. So that, that will be a key one.
P and L percentage?
I think, I keep it as small as possible within some of the towns, I really think that you're not gonna see a pad, maybe keep it at 500, you can back your, this commission debating this again and saying, why don't we have anyone fighting about this?
Okay. Percentage of units that need to be affordable?
I think 15 is, is a good number, right? You know, so from the state level, if there is 30, that drives density up if we're looking for something that this commission is looking for, developers don't have as much mass, it's good to have 15. I will say to Commissioner Cassavan, my understanding of the 10% is the 10%, this is sort of a comment that, and what was mentioned earlier, but the 10% is 10% of the whole housing stock. So for instance, that view, which we recently completed, 99 units, call it 100, you know, it's not that, that we all of a sudden increased the, you know, the denominator by 10, you know, the 10%, it's not, you could call it 10, that you could have, you know, potentially have made affordable, but, but couldn't, but it, I think David McCarthy from Heritage Housing, who was who on the numbers for affordability, the housing, said that I think the view increased the need for the housing, I think there's one or one and a half required units for affordability, because there's already an existing housing stock so large. So I just don't want people, when they hear the numbers, you know, if you commit, you get a 10, that you're increasing your need for what, it's not, it's not like that, numbers, numbers don't work like that, it's really what the actual total numbers are to the existing, added to the existing housing stock, and that's percentage of that. So David McCarthy came up, I think it was one and a half, correct? That's the sample added to that. I'm sure there are other things that we could do as, you know, as this commission, as, you know, developers working in concert with each other to come up with other ideas, but those are some of the big ones that, that I just, parking.
Would you, would you, yes, what we have in place right now, we have at least five units that are being built, that's 15%, 15%, only for the affordable housing, would you decrease that number of dwelling units? Five, or five to four, three, 15%?
I mean, if, I think it would be a good idea, I know you're, you're trying to, what Mr. Cassavan had said, is to try to keep adding to the affordability, if you have the flexibility on the other side, and lower the P and L, I think those are all positive things, and it allows this commission to have the flexibility to work with developers that come in, right? So, yeah, you want, you know, you want certain regulations in place to work off of, that's a reference point, but you also need to build in the flexibility, because it's been said again, I think Dan had said that, you know, each project is, is different, and that truly is the case, both in scale and size and location, and it can vary widely, and, you know, it's hard to have one, one size fits all, and for, you know, if you're trying to scale it. So I think if you guys can build in flexibility, that allows you guys to work with developers and, and get to, and increase your points in the count, so.
This is John Chris, sir, you mentioned that your cost budget, not cost speed, that you could go overpark.
Yeah, we need you to that. Yeah, so we have, I can only say 57, we have, we have 12 rental units on two floors, on the second and third floors, and we have commercial, on the first time office on the first floor, so some of that was driven because it was medical, medical gets more, but it was only 2,000 square feet of that. We wind up having extra parking that is necessary, so if we're really looking, so, and there's a formula behind, you know, the, Mr. Chris, you had mentioned two, you know, in one family you would have two cars, and so we found this, that's kind of the case, you went across, and there's no affordable component there, right? So very often, I mean, we had, just the demographic for those renters, that we were expecting were target, so you had young families that came in, were looking to buy homes, and needed a place to live for a year, so you want to find that home, they stood up or whatever. You had other couples commuting, some had only one car, and they had, they were a couple. So maybe they didn't stay there for a long time, but you have a mix, so yes, you're gonna have people that are, like, that require two cars, but that's not every one of them. So I think there is the flexibility, I wouldn't be overly concerned about, you know, the parking being, you know, for each, each unit, have two for each, because that's just what we're wanting, I think right now, to come right, is one and a half of the hundred, am I, am I correct? I think we're, I think we're right at, at that level, isn't it, there's, right, commercial components, we got to factor in, but the answer question, you know, our experience is that, that we have more response than actually. A huge number, but, you know, enough that I think we could certainly, you know, battle back in future projects, I think, with careful planning and thoughtfulness and, right, successful or not.
This is a function of the number of bedrooms, pretty, pretty on the commercial side, it's a whole different, yeah. For the residential, it's a function of the habits, stance, demographics, the people who chose to live there, is the function of the number of bedrooms per unit, that is what you drive or.
Well, we have much of two bedrooms, we have 10 two-bedrooms, two one-bedrooms, okay? I, I think there's a formula, it's, it's a mix, we cater, and we don't cater to anyone, each group, and we just find natural mix. And I think, you know, with the planners and the parking, the parking gurus, I think they've got it down to, since they just look at the data and they average it out over, you know, regional areas, larger areas, and come up with the data and, and the formula, and it seems, seems to work. So I'd be interested in reading that one apartment application that I mentioned, so I'd, I'd like to study that, but I think that could be very informative, but then, if this guy's having a difficult time, so.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Stone. Anybody else in the room, Mr. Carter?
I, I had one question, Chairman Goodwin, on the, on the unit construction, whether there was any?
Commissioner, is that for Mr. Stone?
Yes, for Mr. Stone. Just, I was curious, is that possible, that's one follow-up question on the, the unit makeup?
Sure, fire away.
Okay, I was just curious if there's any other levers to pull around, bedroom slash bathroom slash, you know, universal design slash elevators, other things that sort of makes certain projects more expensive than others, that, you know, from a RIG's perspective, would loosening make, make more units feasible, i.e. so instead of having one bedroom, excuse me, one bathroom per bedroom, or elevator access, or, or those types of things, first floor access, other sort of hacks?
A lot of that is code-driven, so there's, you know, in terms of elevators and distances to stairways and whatnot, those are, however, those are larger cost items in construction project. That gets back to what I was mentioning earlier, which is to gain efficiencies in construction, you have to have greater densities, so you're spreading out that cost and you're sharing it over a greater number of them, and that's how you bring your overall cost down, and that can get passed on to, you know, the inhabitants. So that's, I think, the bigger, the biggest component, it's not so much the bedroom layout, although the number of bedrooms, you know, influences how many units you get in there, and we typically, well, you know, influences how many units you get in there. And we typically, well, in the Cross, we have one and two bedroom units. And in the view, we have mostly one and two bedrooms with some three, although it's a little bit of a different demographic. But I would say getting, being able to give more units is probably the number one priority.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mr. Carter?
Arnold Carter, at any time you can stop by the crossing and there are ten to twelve empty spaces. And if you go at night or on a weekend, there are thirty extra spaces. So we got caught between a parking change that PNC was doing, but that is a building that has a lot more asphalt than it needed. But one of the things that was highlighted tonight is how New Canaan has no land. So building this great war chest of money that's going to be used towards affordable housing. It can only be used by affordable housing with a combination of the town or developers. The town in, in any town, in any city are not usually the guys who want building projects. One of the people I know was on the phone this evening, this gentleman on Stanford, my old readers worked with before by name of Richard Friedman. He on his own has built affordable housing for the city of Stanford. And I think there are a lot of very knowledgeable people in our community that we should sit down and review some of this with. Because it's not necessarily getting the money. In New Canaan's case, it's more about getting the units. And those units need to range from one, two, and three bedrooms. Some of it for points, but also some of what it is for the need of the community. So currently, I am on the board of Canaan Neighborhoods, who's building Canaan Parish. So the first building, sixty units, which covers all of the old units. Everybody from there is moving into the new building. And then we've been able to create another forty because we had the common. But after this development, the town in New Canaan has something. And thinking that the town compete with developers is probably the wrong way to get us either points or towards a moratorium. So I think it's gotta be a combination of both. And I've heard, you know, classes and discussions about how to do it, you know, protecting small developers. It's every developer. Because if you make it so that development doesn't happen and it requires density, we will never be able to continue getting a moratorium or more importantly, really building the housing that Canaan needs. When we talk about parking, we have several elderly clients who have zero cars. So I have two spaces, but they don't drive. They do have caregivers, so we have visitor spaces. But it's looking at what our other communities, be it Westport, Darien have done and sort of followed their lead. I'm not sure we need to go crap something completely different than a lot of the surrounding communities.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anybody else in the room? Okay, Lynn, let's check.
A gentleman.
I can't start my video. You can hear me, but yeah, you can't see me. Should I speak, start speaking anyway?
Yes, please, sorry.
Okay, thank you. My name is Richard Friedman. I am, I'm a Stanford resident and I'm the president of Garden Homes Management. We are a, we're a family-owned real estate investment ownership, management and development firm based in Stanford. I'm also a trustee of the Garden Homes Fund, which is our private foundation that is focused on the enablement and construction of affordable housing. I am certainly not in the top tier of developers in Connecticut. I'm nowhere near it. But I am probably the most frequent user of eight thirty G over the last ten or fifteen years, which is actually a fairly sad commentary on the difficulty of using eight thirty G. I have built projects in, or had projects approved primarily through litigation in Darien, Fairfield, Milford, Westport, Oxford, and, and in Southport. The project in Southport was actually the subject of a story on PBS NewsHour earlier this year. I am a co-applicant along with the Open Communities Alliance, which is a housing justice nonprofit in Hartford of a fairly recent zoning proposal townwide in the town of Woodbridge that proposed to enable multifamily throughout the town at single family under the single family regs. And you, if you look on the web, you'll find a story in the Connecticut Mirror where I discuss how the idea for this application actually was inspired by a bike ride through New Canaan. So I really have no dog in this hunt. We don't, my business and I personally do not own any property in New Canaan. I'm not actively looking for sites in New Canaan, although I suppose at some point in the future I might. But I have been following this discussion this evening and I watched the tape from the other night and I've been following it with kind of a combination of amusement and frustration candidly. The things you're talking about are all, they're all important. Things like what's the minimum threshold, what is the buyout price? What should the percentage of affordability use, be used? I have used, I've been the beneficiary in two of our philanthropic projects in Stanford. I've been the beneficiary of fee and loo twice. And all the things that you're talking about have been done in other towns. And particularly in Stanford, they have been in place for over twenty years. There's a lot of experience with these. I will tell you that the bias until recently of the Stanford Zoning Board has been to require that affordable units be built on site. And this, this has changed recently. And the ability to buy out through fee and loo requires a special permit in Stanford under the zoning. The default is to build on site. But I think the zoning board has recognized that fee and loo can be quite powerful. And the focus of the zoning board in Stanford, which actually awards the fee and loo and has awarded the fee and loo until very recently. Stanford just enacted an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be the repository of fee and loo funds. That's very recent. But for the last twenty years, the zoning board has awarded these funds. It's always awarded them to private developers or nonprofit developers. The town has never gotten involved in constructing housing, which I know has been a long debate tonight. And the power of fee and loo is leverage. So if someone buys out for three hundred thousand dollars, which is one unit, the zoning board's focus in the last few years has been, has been in awarding that money to people who bring more money to the table than just the money they're getting from the fee and loo funds awarded by the zoning board. So I recently went through a funding round in Stanford. There was a project that was approved to buy out for eight million dollars in fee and loo. And that's at only ten percent affordability requirement and at the time was about two hundred and twenty thousand a unit. And it generated eight million dollars in fee and loo and the zoning board's focus was how many units could they create out of that eight million dollars? And they ended up creating housing that was, was all, it was awarded to four different projects. All of them were one hundred percent affordable. And I believe the total number was about sixty or seventy affordable units. So what's, what's interesting about this is if, you know, if some ferry were to drop eight million dollars in fee and loo into New Canaan, how would it be spent? You know, where would it be spent? And there's been a lot of talk this evening, a lot of references that there's no land, we, we're out of sites, we can only build downtown, we can only build four unit projects, we can only build five unit projects. Land is very expensive. And I think the commissioners probably know that these problems are all self-created. And they're a function of your zoning. And Arnold touched on this. Rick alluded to this very, very briefly. If you want to create affordable housing, you need to have more land area in town that's enabled for multifamily housing. Because right now, just from kind of a quick eyeball, it looks to me like it's about one or two percent. And that means effectively you will never create affordable housing at any scale. You are, in fact, you're not out of land. The fact that most of the town is zoned, single family, in some cases, very large lots, single family. And it's, the zoning obviously goes all the way from four acres down to, I forget the smallest site, maybe it's six thousand square feet. You have really any number of potential development sites. So you have land on public sewer and public water. You have one acre zone, single family, half acre zone, single family that could all be in some shape, form or another rezoned for multifamily. Now, I'm not naive. I realize that this is, I mean, there was an hour discussion this evening about someone being upset about a garage being built next door. So I can only imagine what people would say about having multifamily constructed next door. And that kind of goes against the whole reason why people move to New Canaan and pay dearly to do so, frankly. So I have no, I have no doubt that this is not an easy question. You as commissioners are in a, I would say you're in a pretty tough situation. But I think you know what needs, what actually needs to be done. I mean, the discussion about parking is really sort of a, of a, of a proxy, a reduced version of that discussion. I just quickly looked at your parking while you were having that discussion. You require two spaces for every, for every, for every multifamily unit. There's no distinction based on sizes of the units. There's no distinction for affordable versus market. These are parameters that are used all over Connecticut, all over the U S, actually. Two spaces per unit is, is confiscatory, frankly. It's not, not necessary. Arnold referred to that. But that's really just sort of a smaller discussion, which, and the larger one is of course, what I just talked about. Where, where do you put multifamily? Where do you allow it? At what densities do you allow it? And you know, progress toward affordable housing in New Canaan has really mostly been motivated by a pursuit of a moratorium. Mostly by demolishing existing public housing and reconstructing it at higher densities. This is a path that's been taken by pretty much every wealthy town in, in in southwestern Fairfield County, not just New Canaan, Darien has done this, Westport, Fairfield. But as has been pointed out this evening, you're out of sites. So where do you go next? And that's really the, that's the difficult decision for the commission. If it were enabled, I think you know well that developers would build it at scale and would do so happily. And so I think, I think that's really the question for you to answer. You can talk about inclusionary zoning all you want, but you're ultimately not really going to create very much affordable housing if you constrict the land supply for multifamily to what it is now and you only allow construction of a relatively small number of four unit projects, five unit projects. You're just not going to be able to create any affordable housing. So while all this discussion is, is interesting, it's really kind of just rearranging the deck chairs. And I think you
Mr. Friedman, can you?
Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, and that's it. I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Well, very interesting points. And Lynn, anybody else out there?
So anyone else that wants to speak?
Okay, commissioners, any concluding thoughts? Krista, I guess some more thing need to be done. Also, thank you. It's been some great guidance. Any thoughts, take your own, Krista?
Thoughts at my end. I mean, I, I think there's a, I think the waters are deep when it comes to affordable housing. I mean, I just made a list as the public was talking about things we could go back and change and fix and amend, you know, in an inclusionary zoning ordinance in the future or even now, if that's what we chose to do. And it's, it's a lot of work. And, you know, I think until we dip our toes in the water, we're not going to know the right answers. And I, you know, I hate that to be my answer tonight, but I think we've worked on this for six months. And I think we have a lot of pressure that, that will come down the line and there'll be some missed opportunities if we don't move sooner rather than later. So, I mean, I'm open to it. I'll do whatever the commission wants to do, but I'd hate to let us, let perfect be the enemy of the good here.
Krista, if I may, it seems like we were having this conversation over the past couple of months and everything was great. And tonight it just seemed like kind of the wheels came off a little bit. So I'm wondering, would it help us as a commission to set up like a working task force? That you, sorry, and Lynn could chair? And have it be made up of affordable housing advocates, some developers, you know, kind of all the taskmakers in this area? And we could work offline and then kind of come up with suggestions and come up with solutions to present to the commission instead of us kind of, I feel like we're just, you know, we give you suggestions, you incorporate it, and then we come back and give you different suggestions. So I'm just trying to help you out and I wonder what the commission would think about that, having like a working task force to tackle this issue, tackle some of the issues that we're not really wanting to deal like parking and stuff like that. They could hash it out. I'm happy to help, of course, and bring it back to the commission.
I mean, I'm, I'm open to that idea, Claire. I think it really comes down to how quickly the commission wants to see something like this implemented. Because I think that's much longer path. Not that it's the wrong path. It's just a longer path.
And John Goodwin, I think you know what camp on that, the camp on that is, I frankly think we've made a heck of a lot of progress. I think we've got an excellent outline where we are. I think some of the input that we received from the public has not been dramatically, it's just recommendations. It hasn't been what you all have gone down the charred log path except for perhaps the most previous speaker. So, you know, my view is why not push something on the books? And that's the way that we figure out what works. That's, you know, as I've said before, that's what we've done in the past and, and we're able to tweak our, our regulations.
So John Chris, I would infer that the chairman's comments that I pushed for like to move ahead with all reasonable appropriate speed, which I think we have. We've been discussing this for over six months in subcommittee and now the full commission. You see some input tonight, I'm sure will be probably reflected on by the commission. I also thank that Secretary Nielsen's comment, essentially it must not make best in the good, it's very well placed. And that I think there is more than enough input from the public and various constituencies of the public, as well as our own analysis of pure towns in Connecticut and elsewhere and other ways towns of our type have addressed this issue. pure towns in Connecticut and elsewhere, and other ways towns of our type have addressed this issue. These provide, I think, more than adequate information and input for us to process our conclusions sooner rather than later. And I would also echo the chairman's comments at the very beginning of this point. So I think that the kind of commissioner's been a leader in coming up with innovative ways to address affordable housing for people modest needs. And I think the efforts that the commission has made in these months, our continuation of that is going to be perfect. There are no very perfect solutions, but I think it's going to be prudent what we have now. And I think the public will benefit. And I'm sure as we learn going forward, we'll be able to come up with better decisions. That does not mean we should not make some good decisions now. Okay, what is the, what is the plan for putting this regulation into place? Are we looking to vote on this? Not tonight. That's, yeah, that would be my suggestion. How does everybody feel about that? I personally, this is Dan Rabin, and I personally feel we have heard a lot of really good input from what I'll call players on the street, right? Between the, from the planning side, the attorney, these developers, a lot of great input. I mean, me as a commission, Krista and Mr. Cassavan as well, most experienced and and background on this. But we've, we've done a young man's job in bringing regulations to this point. But I think there are some very good points that the rest of the constituency has brought to the table. And I'd be, in my opinion, I'd be, we're willing to wait another month or two to vote on it, whether it's a task force or a specific task, a single meeting to get that kind of input to further refine this regulation. There might be stuff missing if you were, I mean, we just, basically heard input from all the constituencies, said the 500% regulation is, is completely out of line with everything every other town is doing around us. So why would we go down that road? Right? What we heard is to the contrary, 300% of the, of the state affordable, so sorry, state median income. And I guess it's Westport, one of the other towns with 25 of the, of the town. Way off base from what we've been proposed. So I think we need to listen to the, the people who have been, are involved in this, deep in this day in, day out, in trying to get these projects done. And incorporate some of that information into this regulation. And granted, it may not be, it's not going to be perfect. But I think it's worth an extra month's time to get that input. Hold a single meeting, get that input, and we'll come up with a final version of the regulation. And so James Bash, I agree with what Mr. Rabin said, and to Mr. Scorni's point, I think, visit, what's the structure that we can put in place with those various stakeholders and experts that Dan was alluding to, that will get us to within two months' timeframe, some sort of balance that we can, we can start implementing. And I think we'd be really remiss if we didn't incorporate the information and expertise of a lot of the people that spoke tonight in a, in a working group over the next couple of months to, to help structure that, flesh it out. There are a lot of things that I think we talked about tonight that are new. And that's why Mr. Scorni is, I think, noticing that kind of, that we're all just kind of falling off. Because we're learning as we go along. It's a lot of things that we learned tonight that we haven't talked about previous months. So I'd love to see a working group. I'd love to include all the people that spoke tonight, to the extent that they have availability time. People are going to have differing opinions and different goals. But we'll figure it out. And, you know, the common objective is to build more affordable housing and to have a lot of say in it, to do it in a way that is aligned with the way that we want to see the town develop. Rather than having Hartford decade, what that should look like. But also do it in such a way where we're not putting such constraints on the prospective developers such that we're going to drive them away. Right? We heard that tonight. We want to encourage development, want to see these projects get built. Not want to put paper into regulation that will discourage that type of development. John Chris, I think there is more than adequate information available to this commission. It's time, input from the subcommittee, as well as prior discussions with the commission, as well as this evening. Plus, draw conclusion next month. Having a new task force to follow up on the previous task force, which I'm calling the Nielsen Committee. I just don't see that as necessarily, I don't see this as necessary and to be helpful. And if we have any information available, there are different views on what you want to take, whether it's 500, 300, 400. I think this commission is more than capable of coming to those conclusions. And I personally would like to move ahead with all reasonable speed. And I think moving this to a decision in the late September meeting is the best course of action. Because I don't see, I don't see the lay is really helping us at all. And-
I, I agree. Mr. Chris, Claire, just for you. What, we're not voting on it tonight. Why don't we say if we can get a group together in the next couple of weeks, hash out some problems we've heard about tonight, and present it to the commission next month?
Agreed. This is Dan Rabin. I think, I think what we're all realizing tonight is this type of a meeting with these types of constituencies that have input on this is something we should have done a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Right? That's the elephant in the room. We've all been talking, we've all been talking about it as commission. But we have people in the room here who have a critical experience in this field, in this type of development over the last 10, 20 years, that we probably should have talked to a couple of months ago, and we would be voting on it tonight. So-
I would also highly recommend having the housing authority be a part of it.
Fair enough. Absolutely.
All right. If it's okay. I don't know.
John, give me a couple of thoughts. One is, we did have a public hearing last month. And I did personally invite a couple of people to speak. They did not speak. And it's a known fact that the subcommittee level, at the subcommittee level, people are always welcome to speak. So I think it's a little harsh to say we sort of, you know, said it. No, nowhere.
That's not what I said. What I'm saying is, the discussion we're having tonight and the input that we've gotten from constituents, been good stuff. Has been great stuff. It would have been even better had we done it a couple of months ago. Completely. That's all. Well, this is John Chris, but also it's still an open discussion. People, anyone in the public wants to submit information to this commission in writing, knock yourself out. And so we're not, we've been offering an opportunity for everyone to get their own order for months. And I think, you know, the, the time moves on when it's time to make a decision. It's still open if people want to submit something and have written commentary that's available to the public. That's what our current thinking is regarding extraordinary regulations. They're more than welcome to comment in detail. So I think a subcommittee is, is not really necessary. And we've had this ample opportunity for input. And there's continued opportunities for input. They can submit in writing, and I would welcome it. And then we can decide next month.
This is, this is Commissioner Cassavan. I would observe that the developers who spoke tonight as a group did not say, you guys are nuts to create these things. What they said is that the measurements and the values which might be embedded in this regulation might benefit from amendment. That is exactly Mr. Chris's point. I think it's a very useful point. I think the sooner we get a framework on this, the better off we are. Mr. Friedman's point about, in fact, echoes what we said earlier this evening about the fact that developers should build housing. Certainly, the experience of the NICA has been helpful to this activity. But the sooner we actually have a framework in place, the better off we are.
And why don't we, that's, that's talk exit strategy here at 10:30. Why don't we, I think, well, the commissioner, first of all, I just want to be clear. Because, you know, Ms. Nielsen and the town planner in particular have been talking for the past six, eight months to a lot of people. And they've been talking to the Greenwich Town Planner, the head of Greenwich, the same thing for Darien. I've been in discussions with Westport. So, you know, there's been a lot of work done. But yeah, why don't we take a shot and, you know, see if we can cut a new bridge for next month? I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't, okay. Yeah, I don't think we're throwing the baby out with that water. That's, that's my point. I think we're, we're 95% there. Exactly. We just heard some key points tonight that would be worth considering for the regulation. That's all. The only, the only thing I'd add to that is, I think in terms of resolving that extra 5%, that's where the value, the expertise comes in, so it's finer details. I mean, what everyone has done in this commission is, I think, is excellent in terms of building the core of this framework. Now we're just trying to figure out the periphery of it. And I think having an opportunity to have a collaborative discussion as opposed to just, you know, Paul Stone or Hall and Carter, other gentlemen are just writing things into the commission. There's so much, so much more constructive to actually have a collaborative dialogue. So whether someone calls that a workforce commission, or there's just an informal, I don't know, it can be a formal meeting to get that type of expertise. And we just hope that that happens to try to refine the extra 5%. Okay, well, just, any commissioners want to jump in or if I'm getting that done for the next month, let the planner know. This hearing's continuing. Okay, item number four, for now, any regular meeting deliberation, any possible action, close public hearing items. Like it was hours ago, which it was. 39 North Wilton Road, do I have approval or denial?
Hey, can you clarify who's seated for this discussion?
Yes, all regular meetings are seated, alternates are not seated. Thank you for pointing that out, Chris.
Thank you, thank you.
Somebody can jump in the cold water. The other thing we can do is if you think there's been a surplus of information, we can go ahead and make adjustments.
I would, I'd move for denial.
Any reasons for denial?
I think the, the size of the project is too big. I don't, I don't know why a residential home needs a seven to nine-car garage. I actually have a neighbor who has an elevator in his garage in his existing home. I think if they want to store cars, they could do it like that. And I was also, you know, persuaded a lot by hearing the neighbors. I think that'd cause a big disruption to the neighborhood.
Can I have a second? Can you have a second? Okay, look, we don't have a second. I suggest we delay a decision for a month. Can we, can we request the advocate to come back to the session? Okay, no decision tonight. We'll address this next call. Item number two, 89 Bonus Bridge Road, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Ken Turner? I make a motion to approve?
Any reasons for approval, Mr. Turner?
It's modest, it works well on the site, is architecturally very, very simple and straightforward, and fits well on, on the site.
Can I have a second? Second. Mr. Rabin, the second? Yes. Okay, go ahead and discuss. Turner summed it up pretty well. Yeah, the one thing that I would add is if I got my numbers right, they're only going to be 6% over. So apparently that must now overcome. Then in addition to that, they are already restricted regulations on top of it. Okay, I called a question. Since we're still in hybrid format, I have to go through the whole poll. John Goodman, I go, yes, John Chris?
Yes.
Kristen Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Rabin? Yes. Barrett Scornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner? Okay.
I think he's frozen.
Okay. Okay, let's see if he unfrees. Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
Ken Turner, are you deep frozen? Okay, so I guess I need somebody else to make the motion. Yeah, you're going to make this motion. Sure. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I heard Claire. Mr. Harry, you were seated for Mr. Turner. Okay. And John Goodman, I go, yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Rabin?
Yes.
Mr. Scornia?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavan?
Yes.
Mr. Harry?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Just a motion is approved unanimously. Okay. Item number five, pre-application meeting, 5870 Pine Street and 72 Grove Street, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Sweeney, before you get going, I just want, you've probably heard this from me before. I just want to be extremely clear that this is simply feedback from the commission. Anything we have to say should not be interpreted in favor of the denial. It's simply for feedback.
Absolutely. For the record, we fully concur. I've been having pre-app meetings, the petition over its early iterations for like 20 years, and it's a pretty helpful tool. We don't understand what it is. It's simply a tool as. So again, for the record, Michael Sweeney, part of the comment towards saying that the evidence we're here for the pre-application presentation, Route 58 and 70 Pine Street. And oddly enough, Pine Street has been mentioned tonight. And again, the colleague we had earlier involved this property by other properties in this district that I think had in mind to run forward with the affordability regulation. Again, my way of background, the applications that started to be developed did not include the affordability component. We had a few meetings with Lynn and the staff. There's going to be probably a technical application for asking for some parking, some leave on density, stories and height. But then when we started the affordable housing regulation, starting to forward, we tackled it in a different direction. So what we'll be speaking to you tonight on is actually including an affordability component to this application as we see it. And also discussing with you again how the rope is pulled and tugged as to how many units can fit into a given amount of space. The challenges to parking and how we're trying to work the affordability component into this project, which still makes it viable, but also hopefully accomplishes what we're all trying to accomplish in getting some more affordable units on the rules of the game. So my way of introduction, with me this evening is Dan Steibert, who's principal of targeted real estate equities, contract purchaser of these various properties on Pine Street. Steven Pather, he's a principal of bio architecture. Still, Patr, he's a principal of Bynfeld Architecture. If you're familiar with, uh, Bynfeld, they, that's some of the prettiest, most interesting, uh, developments in architecture in, uh, Warfare Field County. And Rick Ravis, you heard from Rick earlier. We brought Rick down when we saw the affordable, uh, housing, uh, affordable components is taking a more prominent role. So we'll speak to that later in the evening. So the nature of the application again, uh, we saw it was, did not many affordable components to it. We're looking at parking and we'll be asking for some lease on parking. We'll have a parking study, which will, I think, persuade any concerns you have. And I think I'd be comfortable with the mixed uses and share of parking and the parking management plans that we have in mind will work. So we're hoping for us to get together a better plan, uh, which will provide, um, the goals that you're seeking as well as get a piece of property and I think most of us would like to see, uh, have something, uh, new and fresh and bring more people to town that live in town, uh, be affectionate with it. So with that, I think I'll first ask Patr to walk me through the plans a little bit and tell you what we have in mind.
Good evening. I am Mr. Still, uh, principal of Bynfeld Architecture. I understand for the end of the long night, um, sort of this brief, uh, we'll just start this process with you. I want to just extend, give you, one point, you give you an idea of design concepts and concepts. So the image we're looking here is a initial rendering of what the, the good line, the initial design concepts would create an autonomous two-story office clothing on the left corner of, uh, Pine Street and a three-story residential structure wrapping around it. Uh, in this concept, in this concept, and it's a mutual opponent from Pine Street and a two-story office building is completely separate structure. One of the primary ideas here was to try and create interesting, good urban space between those buildings, uh, those spaces. So the residence, it's a common street over here, a parking environment for the public and also serve residents. And, um, sorry, am I being talking to the screen? I'm pointing that way because your body. It's like create interesting urban spaces between the buildings. That was one of the primary drivers of that. Another side side to keep all parking below Pine Street, uh, way on the side of the last street, this chain down there, you know, the side stores, uh, sit this down away from Pine Street. So we're able to get the layer part, level part of Pine Street and one entirely low grade. What this not show is that is some panhandle site and on the panhandle or side, we've created four townhomes, which could provide some interesting diversity again in product residential development. So just describing the architecture, uh, briefly, the office, uh, handleable, it's somewhat inaccurate, but I'll kind of always describe the office to the student, the tenant coming in. We have the opportunity to create something really interesting. Uh, our office mostly works with abstracted, still moving and static, that's represented here. We're playing in this initial concept of massing and breaking down the massing without needs, large based areas. But we see opportunity here to maybe create something really special, explore with soft sporting, large based areas, maybe a little bit more modern rest of that. And, uh, the residential portion of the building takes huge traditional movement.
Can I, can I interrupt for one moment? This is Chris Aaron, Commissioner. Lynn, are you able to share, um, on the Zoom, the slides that the presenter is speaking to, or should I pull them up from the town site?
Um, the, um, you pull them up on the town site.
Okay. Happy to do that. Thank you.
So we're going through the same slides. It's really a short time period, uh, for this exercise, but more than just, like, you don't have to. Uh, very quickly, this was actually part of pricing this size we're doing with the, uh, with the owner and it's not a cheap goal, but that was also that. But it goes to explain that we are committed to providing quality materials on this building. Uh, basically creating large high quality windows and cover that's, I can have, you just come here and study after. Uh, this parking level, you'll see more clearly in session, entirely varied. We'll have a conversation about parking, I'm sure, based on this, or Chris can describe, uh, that this is one of two levels of parking that are hidden behind Pine Street. And this particular one's entirely below grade, 3,000 square feet, approximately, approximately eight spaces on this, uh, entirely behind the event, a tire, tire barrier.
So this is how you're using the hill?
This is even more than using the hill.
You're thinking of, uh, there's a natural hill there. Correct. And that's a rich hill. So you're using this, using the hill to put the part.
Correct. Uh, but you'll see in section, this is not only using hills, it's tiny, very, it'll be very evident in the future. Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Um, so this is the upper garage level. Now you're up level, uh, of Grove Street, which if you stop around, so you can come in from Grove Street, get there into this level directly. On the right-hand side, you'll be ramping down Pine Street. Here you see, um, the townhouses where you have four townhouses and each of those houses has two private, uh, garage. Each of those towns is about 2500 square feet. Again, I think it's good to have just some potential product as you try and decide, uh, or try and serve the, the community, downsides, so townhouses. Next one. Next one, there's one. Should be a landscape.
This is it.
So now you're looking at the level that is level, the level of building is level Pine Street. You're essentially creating a concrete building, beginning much with a session and building this three-story structure for residential apartment, two-story structure, office apartment, creating a concrete platform, building two-story. Um, here you see the concept, which, uh, again, it could be a really interesting space, found space behind two buildings, uh, with curate, make sure that's a special space, public plaza that, uh, the street, uh, also serve residents and the offices. Uh, there's potential here, those spaces, so you're, uh, that, uh, townhouses can each have their own, everybody's space behind them. Again, taking advantage, still looking in front of them, Pine Street is by high, so we have a retain all kind of very high. The idea is to, to, uh, to, uh, to pay attention to the screening that we do, planting on residential side, uh, on site, so that's what that is. Again, early days, but like to create interesting spaces off Pine Street. Pine Street is a nice street, yeah, especially across the street and with that retail space above it, uh, like to continue that, that sort of feel on the street. Um, so the next floor is just your typical residential floor. Again, aware of our office, our office, we have a researches where residential apartment market is going, what communities need, what people need, the recent changes, what the common, um, dynamic pandemic, and also the less recent, uh, of other town, places where you have large houses, like you can, for downsides. Uh, so the idea is that you serve those varying needs by extension. The smallest one bedroom on this, on this plan is about, they have a semicircle feet, largest two bedrooms, uh, largest one bedroom. And again, townhouses separate from 20 bedrooms. The office space here is 6,000 square feet on two floors in this, this level. Next floor is same to four iron third floor and then this plan suddenly indicates a basically in the office. Thank you, sorry. So this is the section and, and this is what I mean, Commissioner, is that if you're on Pine Street's left, uh, the first level of parking below those, those structures is partially very difficult to see it on the back where the real green comes in and it's still five feet exposed to parking for five feet, whereas the lower grade apartment will never be, never be seen from any point, from the entrance. So the lower, left of the bottom, high barrier, down the bottom, high, uh, harsh barrier. Create this type of concrete at home and both three-story structure to the office apartment. Again, early days, we're going to get into conditions about height, we'll get into it. Uh, but this scheme that we see in front of you shows, uh, a height of 20 foot from the average grade to that portion of that, between those triangle, uh, shapes. The idea behind those triangle shapes is that we don't need a, in this scheme or, uh, for residential, for residential use, if you don't, you don't have it at all. Instead, create the architecture. Uh, we've used the strategy in building before like Darien, uh, we'll be trying to create some sort of traditional architecture. Why is this so improved? But don't join them because they're too high. So can we know the company, create a good architecture? You know, we have the best facilities to use these facilities, but have a high count of factory. Uh, and a bunch of, of this place also that you have a dense, for example, several, several tactical systems in those units, those group structures. But just for the record, I think in this scheme, to mid-point of that, we're placing from average grade. And below you have the townhouses, three stories, two levels above the garage level, the store, and it's safe, they've been reading this one of those townhouses. So that's all I have. If you don't have any questions, for me, Rick, Rick, we came back before the housing, uh, after we submitted this, we started discussing this, uh, this could bring in this team. So we'll show you some ideas of how we can, but additional units.
I have a question. Um, I see the level, or the primary level plan, the common level, two, level three, uh, looking at the deck that Jack just summed out, so it's a little bit different than the earlier one. Further down in the deck, um, there's a level four.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we're discussing. That's what we're discussing.
Oh, that's, that all happened after we submitted the first round. Oh, I see. So this, okay.
Okay. Okay. On the basis of me, I'll have a break.
Yeah, one more question. The rendering for the office building, um, shows it as kind of a, a ring with an inner courtyard within that building.
Sorry, this must be. It was just the 21th, so it also.
The plan is still.
It's, it's meant to, uh, represent Scott.
Okay, that's supposed to represent. Uh, I feel exactly the same way. So kind of, uh, this is. And, and I guess on the calculations, uh, where you were running some of the statistic, statistics, uh, the part calculations, that's the assumptions were made that it's going to be medical office. Okay.
Yeah, so we can speak to that. Okay. I'll stop it.
You can start again soon.
Okay.
For the record, Rick. So Jackie, if you could just start with the same view of that, yeah, that. So this was our starting point and then we said, okay, how are we going to layer it in? How, how do you make it work and balance the equation to add onsite inclusion areas on it, with different income levels? So trying to balance the points, the economics, et cetera. So what I'm going to show you is the plans that you saw had retail. And, uh, you know, when talking to Lynn and, and walking around town, there are many empty retail stores. So we said, maybe in this location, at this time, you eliminate the retail and backfill that with more housing, so we can have the inclusion area housing onsite. We also said that if we could add a fourth level, so I'll take you through, uh, in part of the building, uh, away from Richmond, so it's not, um, adding to that height back there where, where you have the parking and then step down, uh, and step it back from Pine Street, uh, so that it's, it's most easily accommodated. So if you go to the next slide, so what we did was we, we trucked the amenities slightly, brought it to the front, so that it activates the street, um, with the, um, different functions and amenities of the building. And we infill and added five units in that area. Um, that's the only change on this level. Next slide. So, I don't know. So.
Is he that, or is he that?
The next. There we go.
So this, um, can I, just as a, as a online participant, the decks that are uploaded to the town site don't have these additions on them. So if Lynn could share it with the Zoom participants, that would be helpful. But if it's not possible, please continue.
Okay, so Lynn will work on that, but please keep talking.
Okay. Thank you. So, okay, well, um, while, while that's happening, that, that particular slide, by adding those units on the fourth level, again, central to the block, so they're the least intrusive from a visual standpoint, we, we've added units. And so we go from 45 to 55 units in this scheme and we have, um, 15% of 55 is eight and a quarter. So we said, okay, now how are we going to accommodate eight and a quarter? And what we looked at, and it's in a chart, but I'll just take you through it because you heard a lot tonight, um, by having two units at 60% AMI rental, three units at 80% AMI rental, and three units at 110%, excuse me, SMI, 60% SMI, 80% SMI, they generate moratorium points, eight and a half moratorium points. Then you have three workforce houses, so 10% is generating points, 5% would be workforce. And we use the Westport numbers, and you're in the middle of your debate, but we use the Westport numbers. Now it's 110% of the old meeting income. Those don't generate points, but they do meet a need. And then we said the fee loop, again, we use Westport, and it comes to just under $100,000 for the quarter of a points, 350,000, so it's 83,000. That's in the chart. So what we tried to, um, show you here was by infilling, without adding a lot of bulk to the building, we're able to increase the density and include onsite affordability. So it's delivered per RADA at, at the time it's developed. From a parking perspective, Lynn, just go to that last slide and the parking. So what, what we show, um, oh, hold on, just leave that for a second. I'm sorry. Go back to that other one and leave this, the cross section, that, no, the other one. That one. Yeah. So in blue, and this is in the package, uh, but in blue is the, what needs to be added. You move that over. There you go. Perfect. Thank you. Um, what we did was infill what you see in blue, slightly higher and infill, um, and infill between the two triangles, the sort of four false roofs. That, that's how we got the units in up on that level. So it's not like adding an entire floor. That's how we did it architecturally. So to the parking and the last slide. And by eliminating the, by eliminating the retail. And retail does not share as well as office. Office and residential share very well because of the hours you go to work, et cetera. But retail can be open at night, can be open on the weekend, so it doesn't share as well. So we've added 10 units, we've taken off the retail. And your parking regulations would require 214 spaces without any relief. If you do it independently, and we use medical because we wanted to use what is a likely choice, because that is an up and coming demand in town. So we use that because it's just, it's a higher parking demand than a regular park, a regular office. So we just left it that way to show you, but that chart, which.
That's the bar graph.
The bar graph. So what this chart indicates, and this is using the ULI, the latest 2020 ULI mixed use parking study. And ULI has been doing this for a long time now. What this shows you is even though your rates require 214, and we're providing in this demonstration plan 161, the highest peak demand, this goes to some of the things that Arnold said, the highest peak demand is about 130 spaces. Because the medical office and the residential do not conflict. So they're sharing a pool of parking. And so you can afford to reduce that parking pretty significantly. We're, again, suggesting that could be even more significant than what we show. But it just, to demonstrate to you that we think parking is an important strategy because fitting in 214 spaces here would also add more bulk or decrease the amount of density you can include.
In the Navy, they call this hot bunking.
Hot bunking?
Yeah. We get to share a bunk with someone. One gets on the watch. Vacation bump, next person goes on, and someone just. There's a space on Navy ships.
Yeah, there is, yeah, okay. There is, there is the opportunity perhaps.
I put, I mean, office, sure, your sense that this would be, well, medical office, we look at space around town, it's one of the empty office space, so. Who's going to write it?
Well, Dan is in discussion with some people that could use this space. If it's not medical office, he's having several discussions for end users for this space. But we just wanted to use medical office because it was just one less iteration to show you. Because if it's regular office, there's a low apartments.
So the question, the ingress and ingress for the parking, there are two. One is on Grove, you go by the townhouses and go coming around. The other is come off Pine Street. So there are two ways. One, does each supply or ingress?
So.
Access both levels or just one level?
I think Sheila can speak better for that than I. I can come back.
Well, thank you. Probably gonna answer, but not unsure because at the moment it's showing the road to size of going up to Grove, a great out to Grove and out to Pine Street. So that's what back in front you have. But we internally be having discussions, what is the best way? Because we saw, they got one way to do, two ways to grow and one way to pine. So that's a discussion we're having, but what you have currently is currently sized on two ways, grow, two ways to pine. Is that answer your question? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, fine. Because you can loop from Pine Street through the garage and grow. That's the way it's coming. So it goes in one or the other? So well, there's always one ingress and one egress. So it's decided. So it could be in one way or the other. It's not two way travel. It could be that, or if they find that it's better to have two ways onto pine. Right, so that, so we have to come back to that, that recommendation, but we backed up my numbers. One other point is that just to the south is something, the empty lot that borders out Richmond Hill. And in my own real estate mind, I thought, well, someone's going to build from Pine Street all the way to Richmond Hill. Use the hill and then have these guys use parking for the people I work with at parks. So we're not talking about building in Richmond Hill. So I guess my idea was bad one or something else is going on. I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, we don't know. We actually have an opportunity for you to have.
It'd be great to have that property.
If you can choose the box.
And just to, okay. All right, I'd like to try to.
Okay.
To follow on Mr. Chris questioning on the garage. So both of the current ramps that come off Grove and Pine, they both enter the first level of parking at that same level. And then internally there's a ramp that goes down to a lower level. Yeah, 320, 320 double stack garage in central tier. So yes, the roads come in at one level. And given the constraints of the site, the fact that only the south elevation is really going to have any significant daylight exposure, is there going to be mechanical venting of this all night? So that, yes.
One of the question. What if any amenities may be outside? Barbecue areas or preparation room, yoga rooms, et cetera, all that stuff.
Yes, so that's a great question because we found through our experience building these projects of some scale larger that what you have to try and do would be to make them successful, to create a sense of competence. Because it's something that's important, that's retention. So it has to be highly advertised. But courtyard you see was a not to the fact that even though we're building in an environment that's a little climate, it would be easy for residents to access. But yes, you specifically look at a grill area in that courtyard. That's the joint. And central there, the fireworks in that, on that next joint, it shows that specifically to your point. That's something that I highly advertise as building. And then we're still debating about the size of the internal base because the client sentiment state got made clear. So. Could you also talk about the green and stated sustainability features of this building? So we haven't got that far down the road. I'll answer you again. I hope it's a standard, start answer, but it's true. In a sense, we, all our, all our recent projects, projects skew energy incentives from both energy components because it's valuable to develop. And once you do that, by definition, you're building in, exceeding requirements of code and energy efficiency to get those energy incentives. Those are high extension values that exchange in the units will create the infrastructure. So for example, from the electrical room to the roof, I decided to put soya in the beginning, the first cost of data can. So this, this, I just like that, that we put in the base building, choose energy incentives. Also, why you have charging stations? Yeah, every question we do not ask. So yes.
Thanks. One more question. It's not going to be more of a great question, but as you guys are well aware, there is the mother of all culvers that goes underneath this site.
Yes, we are.
Carved down to the pond. Given the fact that you can have this added level subterranean parking, how's all that going to work?
So Brian McMahon of our office has been talking to the town about that. And we're looking at a couple of businesses from relocation to moving the driveway to the west side. That will reduce the amount of conflict with that. But it is, it's a hurdle and we will be, continue to work with it. Obviously, we have to, we have to deal with that.
Commissioners on Zoom, questions?
Yes, it's Kent, Kent Trimmer. I, you know, can you hear me?
Yes, got you.
I realize that, you know, these are very conceptual plans and elevations and that a lot of area for mechanical equipment and the building systems have to be worked out. But I just wanted to, you know, just briefly highlight a few things that I observed, just to make sure you're aware of. I noticed that the handicapped parking in the garage, there's only one space for the residential. However, there's four spaces for the office. I think you might want to rethink that. I think you really want more handicap for residential. The mechanical equipment that's going to be required is going to impact your parking layout, the way you currently show it. So you're probably actually going to lose some parking spaces. The amenity on the grade, I guess it's on ground level. Is that the main entry into the residential units and what is in it?
What's in the courtyard or what's in the residential?
Amenities, what's in the amenities?
What's in the interior amenities?
No, you, you show, you show a very large area called amenity. What is that?
Yeah, so.
Over the last slide, Lynn, please. Well, no, over the one that we're looking at last.
Yeah.
It's shaded in green.
Right, right there. No, go back.
No, the one with the amenities up front, still, I think, in the depth of the audience.
No, the floor above.
Next slide.
Going the wrong way.
Going the wrong way. Sorry. Go forward, go forward to the net. There it is, there it is. That's it.
There.
That's it. Okay.
So it's, it's down one level.
It's at, you, it's at, that's a great, at the grade level, Pine Street. It's even the artificial floor level. So it answered very nicely your question. It's firstly. Sorry, go ahead, Kent.
How do I get into the building? You have to go down one more level.
No, this is the, you can walk up Pine Street.
Okay, then where do I enter to get into my apartment?
Is there a main, what he's getting at is, is there a main lobby or?
Right, so the amenity would be, your lobby would be in your amenity. I think it come out of the menu. So I'll just end up, this will answer your question. But firstly, I'm going to describe a few things that are in those amenities. And Pine Street Central today is too small, it needs to be bigger. So we'll do that. It needs to be, have a better adjacency to elevator core, which is all correct. We're just going to get forward in this scheme. Having said that, your amenity is your entrance to your building. It will have your leasing office, lounge area, maybe for residents. Often now, a small colet space, about 45 units, so maybe a few tunnel of spaces you could put on in that space. And a fire, something like that, but it'd be that way. So that answers your question?
Yes, that, that answers my question. If we look at the, the townhouses, the entrance into, I guess there's four, four townhouses. When the door is open, there is only about a foot left before you hit the curb and go into the driveway. That is a very, very dangerous situation. That's going to be a fairly well-traveled road and it's very, very close to someone coming out of their unit.
Kent, Kent.
I want to rethink that a little bit.
That doesn't show us a bit.
I, I have a comment. This is Claire Tiscornia, Commissioner. Kent, I'm looking at what was on the new Canaan Town website and the amenity is behind the retail on Pine Street. Whereas what's on, what's on, what they're proposing or presenting in Town Hall right now, it looks like the amenity is in front of the apartments.
Correct. I, I was looking at the version that was on the site.
So there's a discrepancy, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Because I agree with you, like, I don't know how they would have gotten in their apartments either.
Guys, hold on, let him speak. There's two versions.
We don't mean to confuse you. Amenity, you're correct. And landscape plan, for example, will look against further down across the elevators and more aligned with an elliptical shape. This diagram specifically is addressing how we get additional units to what you're seeing in the, in the first package. As case for units in the first quarter and relocating amenity to two streets. That's why.
Okay, I, I just saw a different thing. So this is the most updated one, the one that you're presenting?
This one. This one addresses.
I'm sorry? I can't hear you.
So this one addresses the additional four or units specifically, adding additional units.
Okay.
And another question I have is on the, if we go to the exterior rendering again. It appears that there's a chimney on the end of the building. And I'm just very curious, what, you see it in the upper left-hand corner, there's a chimney. What, what is the purpose of that? It's, it's not, it's not real, is it?
Oh, entirely, it's the, it can be a whole frame in the house. Use that to bring, if you have gas, fire bases, for example, and, you know, you can bring those.
Okay. So, you know, we can assume that there's going to be some refinement done with this design and that this is very much a character sketch at this point in time, correct?
Yes, this is a few of the days, but.
And then my, my final question is on the measurement of the heights. If we go to the original three-story alternative, you're showing the peak at 330 feet. And then you're showing the flat roof at 315. So there's 15 feet. That is, it's, it's higher. What I'm getting at, I don't think your measurements are taken from the right locations. You've got center line of the parking garage and then you go to the flat roof. I, I just, I'm not sure that that is an accurate way of measuring the height of this building.
So we, we put pre-hides on this, on this particular scheme on that. Whatever it is, it's on the left, but it's just looking at the numbers that is. Just from my experience, we did the building in Forest, from Forest. We were also putting heights, the heights of that roof, the heights on that point, the heights to the ridge. That's what we did here. And you're right, if you measure to the ridge of that roof element, it's about the same height.
Okay.
But we are asking, in this particular scheme forward, explain these additional requirements of height that you consider that we measure height to that roof because angle portions are merely used to create the architecture we want to create and also this is something to screen. Technical.
So if I understand correctly, you're, you're really asking, or your preference would be for, for the higher density. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. To adjust them forward.
Okay. And then just, you know, which I understand. My final question is on your courtyard. It's fairly narrow and it's going to be in shade a lot of the year. I wonder if you want to think about that one a little more and see if there's some way to open that up a bit or something so that it's a little more, you know, gets some sunlight during winter.
Okay, we'll, we'll do, I think, you asked for some sunstroke, so we'll come back with that some.
And then I, I'm sorry, do we have one more question? On the, the garage, you say it's mechanically ventilated?
Yes, it would have.
So where is the exhaust going to take place?
Again, early days, those exhaust, those exhaust, that depends on the chicken line fans, five foot by five foot, well, the garage size. That somewhere, the previous screens that will give.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
This is John, Chris, three questions. When is, we hope we'll see more detail on the elevations in this section, which is sort of the back end of the building. Should be visible from the park and. I don't know what it's going to look like. Second, snow removal, giving of the courtyard, so you're not going to run any trucks in there. I'm not sure how you get snow out of there and where it's going to go. Pretty cul-de-sac kind of areas where you just can't kind of push it all to the side. And I don't want to have snow removal in, in Chappaun acres. Third, as I'm sure Mr. Swinney will tell you while we have comments on your landscape plan, so. Just letting you know.
I've heard.
Yeah. You remember, and I.
This is Commissioner Castan. Thank you for starting on the affordable discussion. However, two questions. What are the bedroom characteristics of the proposed five units? That would be 60 and 80%? And did you say you use state median rather than area median?
So, yes. Again, these details all need to be worked out. But we were thinking that they would be a combination of parata, of what other units are within the same building. And we were talking about, thank you. If you look at under affordability requirement here, we have two at 60% SNI, state median income. Three at 80% SNI. And below that, we have the points. So two at 60% generate four points. Three at 80% generate four and a half points, these are rentals. And then the workforce housing generate none. So you have eight and a half equivalency for Toria points. If this was a condominium and these were for sale, you'd have eight points. It's being ruled, we use, again, the Westmore calculation.
And I presume that none of these units would be offered for sale, it's 100% rental?
It's 100% rental, correct. Oh, the townhouses might be for sale, townhouses might be for sale.
Thank you.
So if, if, as a function of the relief offered, if the commission were to grant an additional 15 feet of height, for example, to go from the village district of 30 feet, as stated on the drawings here, to 45 feet. What kind of additional unit count would that allow? Would that allow a fourth story?
So if you go to the cross-section, then we, it actually is taller than 45 feet. Especially if you go to the, move down the fourth level. I certainly can't read it, still, it probably knows. But you're talking more like 50, 30. So obviously, if you wanted more density, you could have more than what we've shown. What we've shown is 20, a little less than 20% of the roof area. If you go back one more slide, I think. No, back. So what you see there is about 20% of the total roof area of the entire development. So certainly, if you wanted to add more density, you could continue that fourth level around. We, again, we're trying to balance a bunch of equations. And so that's what we did for this demonstration. Certainly, we could add units. We have the shared parking capacity to add more.
Okay, and then, so if, for example, you were able to maybe, you know, flatten the roof, go with a different, more modern aesthetic? And, you know, have you considered roof decks and that type of amenity overlooking the park? So it's less of the New England vernacular, more of the modern higher density to get more units?
We, well, we, no, we haven't considered that at this point. But I, I would say in terms of views of the park, when I see a vacant lot, I don't assume that it's going to stay vacant. So something's going to go there. So I'm not exactly sure what use of the park will be left over after that property's developed. So we definitely don't want to design something based on a vacant lot. But, but we certainly can look at different design possibilities to try to, again, rebalance and explain.
Got it, but the relief asked for here with that consideration is 30 Village A to the 45. Okay.
It's, it's a little bit higher than that, but yes. So the relief is having residential units on the ground floor. We're talking about the height, we're talking about the sharing of parking. And I think there's a couple of other real special permanent changes that we would need to effectuate this plan. And obviously, we go into more when we sort it all out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so again, the text is highlighted where we would need relief. It's chart. I think we touched on.
John Goodwin, first, my apologies for going in and out. And I might be repetitive, it's been a late hour. Just a couple of quick things. You, you're aware, we do have a little parking regulation on push.
I am not aware of that. Okay.
Could be relevant, I don't like it.
Okay.
Is that all it is? I can't. This will be repetitive, I'm sure. The amendments you're looking for, these are text amendments to the business A zone.
Correct. Yes, but they also, this is A zone, Jackie Kaufman, for the record.
Jackie, if you don't.
Why don't you come on up, Jack?
And I might be repetitive, that's.
No, no.
Could be named Jackie Kaufman, for the record, in terms of what's in it, you can see, the special permits. The, the procedure of the regulation is that the business A zone allows you to have residential development under the retail fee scenario. Under those special permits. So those have been exercised and they may or may not need to be massaged to meet this. Depending on affordability standards play out, so it's going to improve its synergy between them. What's very interesting is that the business A zone itself includes language now on affordability that allows for FAR exemptions. That's a very much, so, on its own, does not. So there is, they have similar goals, business A zone and affordability, FAR exemption, but those two things coexist. So I think that with some of the affordability changes that are, that are being sought by the town in connection with affordability text changes that we will be proposing in connection with your regulation. And that all that exists, that there's synergy there. So they're already speaking the same language, these sections.
Okay, and Ms. Kaufman, that's you, probably not going to be taking a look at, you know, what this could create elsewhere, this A zone section.
Yeah, right.
That'll, sure, that will be a big issue. Everybody, everybody else, Zoom Commissioners, good?
Your question, Mr. Goodwin, of the field of parking regulation, I think Jackie mentioned. Those are two, I think, five, and then there's a scale above that, whether it's a new or an older unit. I think that was used under the Stanford Hospital application for Grove Street. What we're anticipating here, however, though, is when we, we make our changes to the text and business saying to provide for a special permit. Probably conjunction, currently affordable, regulation works out that by special permit, based upon traffic studies, you can vary that amount. So we wouldn't be looking for any additional field payment for parking. We're going to put that into the reg as it varies from the, from the gray line.
Any other, any other feedback? As everybody knows, these brief apps are most valuable for a potential applicant to have a sense of, you know, how you feel about this. Thing you would go along with, it's going to sound reasonable, just any other thoughts for.
I think, well, it's a, it's a great project. I think we've all been patiently waiting for years to see what was going to come of Pine Street. It's nice to see something happen here. As far as sign of law, I think Kent touched on this, this is Cornea did. But the amenities and the entrance to the building and how that relates to circulation of the building. I would look for other potential options. You've got the elevator course down in the corner of the, of the market of the building. By the number of people, relocate that more internally. Increase advantage again for the residential or something else. And then, we'll comment on the, on the aesthetics, the current schematic designs.
Lynn, I know you've been talking to the team for a while now, but do you have any input, thoughts?
Oh, no. On the web, some of this.
Okay. All of you, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for staying so late. If there's any other further epiphanies you have, you know, visceral or you want to go through the documents again and have any other thoughts. You get up to us and Lynn will do a picture.
Sure, okay. Have a good night, all.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, mine, this is good news. Item number six, Marquitos ZPA and I'll, we will not hear that tonight. What we are going to do is let an aisle talk. And then we're, we're going to discuss whether we put it on the September agenda or six. The other thing we're going to talk about, then return to all of you, is potentially do a special meeting. Because I do it just so, it will be lengthy. Yeah, item number seven, draft zoning amendment marijuana. So we did have Nick stick around, obviously, right? Oh, he is.
Mr. Chairman?
Nick, you're Cooper. Nick, let's do the following at this late hour. Just take us very quickly through it. And then Commissioner feedback. And then last month, I had said we would take this to a special meeting this month. And we ran into a timing issue on special people, I'd say the public here. But I will ask, just in case anybody stayed out there, whether to talk about this. I suspect the answer is no. But Nick, why don't you take us through it real quick, please?
Sure, will do. Luckily, it will be quick. Because if, if you have it there in front of you, I mean, we're really dealing with only a couple additions to our definitions section. And then our general prohibition language, which states that, in reference to the new legislation that allows us to do this, we're prohibiting all cannabis establishments, which encompasses those 11 new categories of cannabis-related businesses. Also included within that umbrella of cannabis establishments are medical facilities. As this commission, I'm sure, knows, our regs currently prohibit medical facilities, dispensaries, production facilities in all districts, as well as the growth and dispensing of recreational in all zones in town. But I think if we were to pass this proposed regulation that covers all the bases, it hits all of these potential categories. And it does what, what I believe this commission, at least, intended in some respects to do, based on our discussion last month. This language is effectively the same as what we've been recommending for our other municipalities. And if you were to look at some of the regulations that have been passed by other municipalities to date, they don't look much different than this. So the bottom line here is if this commission is inclined to consider an amendment that looks like this, prohibiting all establishments, so recreational and medical included, this is what that would look like. If there's some intention to carve out an exception for medical dispensaries, then we can do that as well. But if we effectively want to maintain the status quo and also prohibit recreational, we pass this amendment. And then I'll, I'll just point out, we would also strike the existing definitions in our regs related to medical. Because everything, like I said, would be covered under this prohibition. If you want to put a sunset on this provision, we believe you, you can do that. And in fact, we've, a couple of our other towns are doing that. But you don't have to. So if, if you want to pass this with an effective date, with no end date, and with, with the contemplation that at some point in the future, if the commission decides to consider more robust regulations or, or revoke this prohibition, then it may do so. I think that hits all the main points, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beaumont. Any feedback questions for Mr. Beaumont?
When you reference municipalities, are you reducing anywhere from six to 24 months? I imagine it's just a number, small number of municipalities that have come up with their, their own regs. I mean, I hope that in actually, in this case, that we have an indefinite prohibition. We don't have a sunset provision, it's extended indefinitely. And that makes us a little bit of an outlier versus some municipalities, I don't think, on this issue associated.
Yeah, I, I think that's more or less accurate. I, I've seen some municipalities that have just passed an indefinite prohibition. Others are, are taking this up as a more temporary measure. So I think if, if you were to leave this indefinite, or in other words, permanent unless amended, I think you, the, the town may be in the minority, but, I mean, everyone's moving at different paces. So I can't be certain what, what the tally is at this point.
Anybody else?
It's John, because my understanding is that if the, this commission, I think the town council has to approve this too. No, that's us, I think that's an alternative, that's right.
That's correct. That, this would be an independent action of the PNZ that's not subject to town council review.
If we don't, and the window for this commission to inaction expires once the state, this wisdom, other rules, we're essentially at liberty rules and we can't go back and decide to change, is that correct?
Um, I'm not sure I would put it that way. Because at, at least the way the legislation is drafted and effective now, and, and I don't, I'm not aware of any proposed changes on the horizon, there, there's no window, really. I mean legally, at least. Practically, I've been pushing towns to move on this sooner than later. At, at the very least, by the end of this year, because the word that we've heard from the governor's office is that the state may start issuing provisional permits for some of these social equity applicants as early as the spring of next year. We've already had developers start making inquiries at, at some towns. Not, not sure if you've experienced that here in New Canaan, but that, that's really the, the driver for getting this done is, is we don't want to butt up against the, you know, business owners trying to set up shop. Because if we don't have a prohibition in place, or we don't have other more robust regulations in place, then yeah, th- these have to be treated as any other retail use.
Very good. What's preventing us from passing this regulation? We have to take it to a public hearing. So last month, we agreed to take it to a public hearing, but then that made it timing issues. Lynn, is anybody out there in Zoom land? Because I know there was interest.
Does anyone on Zoom want to speak? And so three for here.
Okay, so we'll take it to a public meeting. Thank you, Mr. Bomonte, sorry for the late hour.
Not a problem. Good night, everyone.
Take care yourself. Chris, the planning subcommittee, I think we dealt with that.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Good answer.
Item number nine, A 365 Luke's Wood Road, Grace Farms Foundation report scheduled for fall 2028, September of 2021, December 31st, 2021. Even though I completely disagree with my decision now to refuse myself on Grace Farms, I am, for the time being, continuing to do it myself. So I'm going to ask Mr. Ward to run this place.
Okay, well, as I understand it, that this is really a continuation of what has taken place in the past. Is that correct, Lynn?
It is. It sounds similar to, first thing you said, this whole actually coming and they asked permission for approvals to go for, what they think that these are the parts. This piece, the, so Grace Farms has been a part of the door, which they include since March of 2020. The public plan. This is the, this is the first step. It's all going to simply be that. And you were called off through the navel. But then the first step was, I mean, it was.
So does this require anything else than?
Lynn, can you speak more into the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. So typically, that would, I don't know, you would go through where it's divided. Typically, it's a, this is a, I don't, they come in for their seasonal schedule by the courts. The race permit of 2017 is a pretty thorough, comprehensive requirement. All the effort of court there, events. So this is.
All right, so. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Call and vote, John, Chris?
Yes.
Daniel Radman?
Yes.
Claire Deschornian?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward, yes?
Yes.
Kristen Nielsen?
Yes.
Who's the next option that you see?
I think, I think it's me, Dick.
Dick, Dick, why didn't you seat me?
Okay, Arthur Cassavan.
Yeah, yes.
Chris Harris.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Okay. Sorry, Arthur, I, I didn't mean to get in front of you on the line there.
No, it's okay, I'm chopped liver over here, it's all right.
Okay, minutes, July 13th, 2021. Anybody have any issues with that meeting status? Pretty good. Okay, and then July 27th, 2021. The only question I had there was who did I end up seeing? Was James, was it you, or was it Chris? For some reason, it was going to be you, but I don't think you were on the Zoom. James said I see you last month.
Yes, you did, because Chris left and we didn't know why.
Right.
Sorry, Chris.
So Lynn, the only, so the only change to the agenda to the minutes is that Mr. Bash was seated for Mr. Williams, if not Mr. Harry. Okay, so I'm going to call the motion. I cannot call a motion. Do I have a motion for approval of both members? Move. If I have a second? Second. Okay, Dick Ward seconded, John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Kristen Nielsen?
Yes.
And Radman? Yes. Claire Deschornian?
Yes.
And Turner?
Yes.
And Ward?
Yes.
Though you did not attack, so.
The meeting, I did the second method.
Okay, I called the two together. Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
Okay, and Chris Harry, did you attend both meetings? Well, no, you didn't. Because we didn't see you on that second one. So James Bash, you're seated.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, motion carries. Everybody have a great night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.